All right, I think we're ready. Welcome to the September 6, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting, special meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. This time we'll call the meeting to order, and I would ask Commissioner Deb Hagcock to do the moment of silence of reflection and the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagcock. Next on our agenda is review and approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or changes? See, now I look for a motion.
Second.
I heard it simultaneously. Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter, to approve the agenda. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is meeting the rules and procedures, and I think at this point in time, I'm going to ask Jay Alderman to review how we are going to run the meeting today, and I'll do a little follow-up when he's done.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. Right before I came up here, I provided Cross Sabers and Reno Gulch Storage with kind of the agenda that I'm going to talk about here in the process. But I realized I have not met the owner of Kem or the Silver Dollar Saloon. Thanks for this opportunity. I'll try to be as quick as I can, but I think it, I'm going to take a little bit of time because I want to make sure that there's no questions or confusion, because now's the time to ask questions and to get answers to those questions rather than in the middle of the proceedings. So, so this meeting was scheduled as a special meeting, so it's a little bit different than the ordinary meeting, not in a lot of ways, but enough it bears me saying something about the process here. We have actual parties to this proceeding today, and by parties, we're defining them as, obviously, the applicant. And the applicant here today is Cross Sabers LLC. And they're seeking access to a portion of a parcel they own outside of Hill City. We've all been there, so we don't need to go any more detail about where it's at in the description. And there's three ways in which they're seeking access, or there's three steps, let's say. They want the board to consider the reopening of a previously vacated section line. Then they're seeking to relocate that section line to an area that is advantageous to them to access this piece of property. And if need be, the third item then is the condemnation of an easement for isolated tract. It's a different statute or chapter of the code, and they would be asking to condemn an easement to get to that line or to their property. And they're a party because they're the applicant here, so obviously they're a party. The other parties are the owner of Kem, the owner of the Silver Dollar Saloon, and then, of course, Reno Gulch Storage or Darren Rains. They're obviously parties because they are potentially subjected to, or they have an interest in where a route might be condemned or a section line open, so they're an affected landowner. So they're a party. The public is not strictly speaking a party to this proceeding, but the public will also have an opportunity to speak here today, and I'll get into that, which I'll do right now. So, agenda-wise, there's, if everyone has an agenda or has looked at it, there's three items. There's the item of effective, all together. So item number six is the reopen the section line. Seven is the relocation, and then eight would get into the determination of whether or not the property is isolated under the definition of Chapter 3122. So how this will go for each of those agenda items, all three parties have exactly 75 minutes. And Holly has the ability with some phones here to do a countdown, so each party has 75 minutes total to divvy that up as they choose amongst all three items. They don't get 75 minutes for each item. It's 75 total for the three together. So if they want to spend, when it's their turn to speak, if they want to spend 20 minutes or 15 minutes or 10 or all 75, they could choose to do so, but that's going to cut them short on the other agenda items. And the way which it's laid out here is Cross Sabers would go first. They're the applicant. They're the petitioner, so they would go first on that very first item, reopening of the section line. And they would put on their case, they have a witness list that they have provided with witnesses. So in speaking to that, everyone was given a strict deadline of when they were to have all of their documents in that they want the commission to consider. There's no more documents to be allowed in after that deadline. Same goes for witnesses. Everyone was to put in a witness list of who they intend to come and make sure they're here, so there's no adding to that witness list today. So Cross Sabers goes first. They can use whatever amount of time of that 75 minutes they wish on this first agenda item. They can have, the attorney can speak, the attorney can have other witnesses that they've listed come up and speak, and then sit down. When they're done with their presentation, then you'll note on here that the, the commission can request if there's staff agency like Planning and Zoning County Highway that have any comments they want to share on that agenda item right then. Then the board can ask questions. The board can ask questions of anyone, the attorney that spoke, the witnesses that spoke on behalf of that particular client, and, of course, the county staff. Once that is all done, then you move to the next party up, which as we list here is Reno Gulch Storage. I would ask, as I mentioned earlier, we have the ability to time, start everybody at 75 minutes in countdown. I would ask that no one interrupt them, please, during their presentation of that time because that's their time. When the commission starts asking questions, that won't count against anybody's time. And when staff comes up here from the county and speaks, that doesn't count against anybody's time. Just when they're presenting does the clock tick on their, their time. So we'd ask people to hopefully interrupt as little as possible, and I might interrupt occasionally, and I'll tell you why in a minute, and hopefully we can avoid that. So again, Cross Sabers goes, they're done, staff from the county can come up, board commission can ask questions of anyone, and then we go on to Reno Gulch, and they have the same opportunity. They can choose, now it's my turn to come up. They have 75 minutes that they have to break up between all three items. And so, obviously, Reno Gulch, having heard Cross Sabers' presentation, they can speak, essentially rebut during that timeframe anything they heard Cross Sabers speak to, but they also, obviously, will want to put on their own case. And then you go through the same process. When, when they're done, they've used as much time as they want to use because they want to save some for the other agenda items, then staff can come up again, board commissioners can ask questions of any of the witnesses, anyone who spoke on behalf of Reno, and then sit down, and then that's done, and then we move on to Kem. Now, my understanding, the saloon owner did not present or provide any documentation to be considered today, nor presented a witness list. Nonetheless, the owner would have 75 minutes to speak, and it's going to be them speaking alone because they didn't produce any witnesses or produce any documents that I'm aware of. But they do have that right because they are a party like anyone else. At the end of Cross Sabers going first, then Reno Gulch, then Kem, then Cross Sabers gets an opportunity to rebut, to come back up on this same agenda item and choose however much time they want to rebut. And the reason is, is because Cross Sabers, at the point that they spoke first, they hadn't heard anything from anyone else. Where Reno Gulch and Kem had both heard from Cross Sabers, so they're getting to rebut when they're up here, if that makes sense to you. So Cross Sabers should have the same opportunity at the end to come back and discuss or have one of their witnesses come back up to address something that either Reno or Kem provided. That way, everybody gets 75 minutes to choose how to use it, and everybody gets to speak to everyone else's testimony. At the very end then, that's where the public comes in. When everyone's done, the rebuttal piece is done, it's now time for the commission to start discussing the topic, get public input, and have a motion to vote on. That's where the public comment period comes in, like at any of your other meetings, as you would ask for, and I should say this now before I forget, if anybody is here, you're going to have plenty of time from the public to speak. You would want to fill out a speaker request form, otherwise you won't be speaking. And so if you want to speak on an agenda item as a member of the public, please fill out the speaker request form so that they have that and they know to call on you when the time comes. And the other, the other caveat to that is what we're, we're hoping is that the witnesses for the parties are who is going to speak for those parties by public. We're hoping what that means is people that are unrelated to the parties, that they're not the owner for a party, that they're literally a member of the public who speaks to best interests of the public on any of the agenda items. So that's really what it's intended for, so that there's not redundancy. We're not intending to allow what is strictly referred to as like cross-examination that you might experience in a court. The point being is that we're trying to keep this limited on a timeframe, and in each party's presentation, there will be opportunity to rebut. Obviously, if you don't agree with something that's been said, you can certainly address in your presentation, you can address that with the board rather than addressing it to individuals in the audience. And you can also, in your presentation, have your witnesses come up to rebut something you heard from a prior witness. But there's not going to be a strict stop everything and allow the attorneys to cross-examine the witnesses that everybody presents. Finally, just as an example of just the flow of how this could go, we have, again, three agenda items, so let's just take agenda item one, reopen the section line. The county commission may vote to approve that, and so you reopen the section line. Then you go to the second one is to relocate it. The county commission could relocate. They could vote to approve a relocation of the section line. If that happens, by logic and common sense, access has now been provided to the property. There would be no reason to go to item number three, okay? Let's now look at the opposite. If the commission were to deny the reopen of the section line, there wouldn't be any logic going to item number two because there's no section line to relocate. But you would still then go to item number three. Does that make sense? If you denied the opening of the section line, there's no section line to move anywhere, so no access has been provided, so Cross Sabers still has the right to have you move on to item number three, which is a separate item altogether condemning an access easement to an isolated tract. Then you have to discuss, are they isolated or not? And we can get into more of that as we go, but I just wanted to give, those are the scenarios so everybody knows. If one is denied, there really isn't a two, and so there'd be, there's no time to spend on number two, you'd move on to number three. Or vice versa, if one and two are approved, there's no number three, so you're done. So it's choose your time wisely, spread it amongst the, the three as you seem fit. And I guess I will stand for questions. If anybody, from what I said, have a question about what I said, or if you think I left something out or forgot something, please let me know.
No. Thank you, Jay. You were very thorough. We thought we'd start this out. We're going to give you guys about five minutes to allot your time for each item. As Jay just mentioned, that in the scenarios that happened, if one another happens, the time you allot to that, if it's, we don't discuss that, it'll be moved up to your next item, three or one or two, whatever it is. But very well put, Jay, but we'll give you five minutes to allot your time out. We did lay out this agenda like this respectfully because we know this item is a sensitive one and also a serious one, and then we want to give everybody the opportunity to have their time to speak their piece and present their case. That's why we are going to not, we're going to try not to interrupt you as you keep your presentation. We'll see, the commission will ask our questions towards the end and have staff report also, ask them if they have anything that they, they want to share, and then when we get into public comments. I will ask, once all the presentations on each item's done and all comments are made, I will ask for a motion to be put on the floor right away so we know what we're talking about, and you know what, where we're going with this. So that's part of the procedure that I'll, I'll start with on that. But I think from what I heard, there's a few hiccups, or some people that have witnesses that would like to leave right away. That's something the commission will have to take up when that's presented, because it's got to be fair to all parties involved if that person would like to leave. So that's something for you guys to work out before you come up. So I'll give you five, about five more minutes to allot your time out. Jay, did you have any final comments?
I did. I knew I'd forget something. I wanted to make one last comment with regard to the exhibits. Up here for everybody's benefit, here's the exhibits that have been submitted by the county agencies. Here's Reno Gulch, and here's Cross Sabers. So these are what the commission has officially, and that will be made part of the record. And so the attorneys are more familiar with this than the average layperson, but we would appreciate when you come to the mic, obviously, identify yourself, who you're with, who you're testifying for, and then if you're referring specifically to a document, please identify that document. In other words, I want to talk about a letter we got from the game and fish department or whoever it might be. That would be Cross Sabers Exhibit One, or it would be Rains Exhibit Two. That way, in the record, because people that might review this down the road wouldn't know what you were referring to, they'd have no clue, but if you refer to the actual document, then that makes sense in the record. And the same with if there's something on the screen up here, different routes or whatever it might be. Try to be as specific as possible instead of just point at the screen and say, over there. No one would know what over there means if you're reading a record after the fact. So try to be very specific. We've got the cursor here that would allow you to use the little thing and run around on something, or upper right-hand corner, or the yellow line starting in the lower left and angling up. You know, use some descriptors to help the record be as clean and clear as possible. So with that, sorry for taking so much time, but it's, it's worth doing.
Thank you, Jay. So if you guys get your times allotted out between three items and would present them to Holly, did you, no?
They just get 75 minutes total.
I thought we're going to separate them up for each item.
We'll just do the countdown. They need to police themselves for each section what they want to do.
Okay. Is everybody good with that?
Mr. Chair. Can I ask a question? So does that mean if they wanted to present 20 minutes on the first one so they can save the rest of it, if we go to item number two and then item number three, they are saving up their time for?
Okay. They're going to keep track of that themselves. Okay. First of all, the first question is, have the parties come to a private agreement in this matter? We take that as a no. So we are going to move forward with the meeting, and as presented in the agenda, first up is Cross Sabers. And just, please identify yourself for the record and?
Yes. Quentin Riggins on behalf of the applicant, Cross Sabers. If I might have just a moment before my time starts, just for a procedural question. One of the things Mr. Alderman and I discussed is the fact that both the applicant and Mr. Rains have some witnesses that are on the same list. One of the things we could potentially do, if we can switch times and let him question that witness after I'm completed, is that we might be able to send him home. I didn't know if that was something that was workable for the commission, if we just want to recall them as part of Mr. Rains' case later.
So Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
Well, what if, if you guys question them, that's fine, but then you mean, then we would question them and then they would leave?
Correct.
So what if we had a question later of them as the bad thing, meaning once you've sent them home? So just, just a question, Mr. Riggins.
That would be the downside, if that's a possibility. My understanding is they're preparing to be here for the duration of the hearing. It was just a thought I had that perhaps we could get them on their way.
Yes, that's why I'm saying that, just in case, because it's always afterthought that we have another question, or because both sides present something and then we question them, come back, we've questioned other stuff, and now we need to ask them a different question, Mr. Riggins. So to be fair, there's going to be the professional on that side, and you guys would be guessing what they were thinking after the fact. So that's just my thoughts, sir.
Okay.
And I'm going to chime in on that also. I think, although I respect everybody's time, but our time's valuable too, and I think between the two presentations and, and once you get through the first part, if they choose that they don't feel they're needed, they can leave, but I think this is a pretty serious matter, and I think it deserves our full attention.
That's not a problem with me at all. It was just a thought that I had to try to make things as smooth as possible.
Okay.
But I have no issue with that at all. Again, Quentin Riggins on behalf of the applicant, Cross Sabers. I appreciate everyone's time here today. It is somewhat difficult to allocate time between the three separate items because they are so interrelated, as Mr. Alderman mentioned, that you don't get to some if you don't address the others. And so the witnesses that I have today are really going to speak to elements of all three, and so it's likely that I'll use up my time going through all of my witnesses because they're going to address points that involve all three of the different items on the agenda. Primary witness that you're going to hear from is Cale McNaboe, Long Branch Engineering. Mr. McNaboe's been involved in this process since the beginning, since the original petition to vacate the section line years ago. What we're dealing with here is really kind of an odd situation. There was a section line right-of-way. Ultimately, that section line right-of-way was vacated. Because of that vacation now, my client believes it has an isolated tract or a parcel of property more directly that it has no access to. That access could be provided one of two different ways. One would be to reopen the section line, which we filed an application to do with the requisite number of signatures. That's Exhibit Two to the Cross Sabers exhibit. Along with that motion to reopen, we filed a second motion to relocate that section line. That comes about because one of the reasons for the original vacation and some of the discussion that revolved around the original vacation was the fact that the DOT was unlikely to grant an approach in the location of the second, or excuse me, of the original section line right-of-way due to the fact that there were multiple other approaches along this particular highway in that specific area. So in asking the commission to reopen the section line, we're also then asking to relocate it. And the reason for that relocation is to address that concern that the Department of Transportation has. There are two competing areas where we're asking that section line to be relocated to, and Mr. McNaboe is going to go through those with the commission in great detail. That consists of option A and option B. There are really two specific points of access. Exhibit A is an access through an existing approach on the Rains' property that would go down an existing trail where they have storage units, and it would just continue from that point forward across the Mickelson Trail at a 90-degree angle. We believe this is the optimum place to reopen the section line and relocate it to for a number of reasons. One of which, it's already an existing approach that DOT has already approved. It's already a roadway, and so there's already a spot there where the road would begin, and it's also the most cost-effective approach to getting across to the isolated area of the Cross Sabers property. And it crosses the property in a straight line at a 90-degree angle. Option B is one that we've discussed on prior occasions and at the site visit approximately a year ago. That is on the property border between Kem LLC's property and the Detweiler property. And that would be utilizing Exhibit A to the Cross Sabers petitions or submissions for exhibits. That Exhibit A is an easement that Kem LLC granted to Cross Sabers in order to utilize its existing approach. We would come off of the highway at that approach, which DOT has already approved, and then that roadway would continue, that section line, if relocated, would continue along the border of Kem, or excuse me, of the Detweiler property and allow for the construction of a roadway which would come across that property and would also cross the Mickelson Trail at a 90-degree angle. So those are the two options that Cross Sabers has for reopening and relocating the section line right-of-way. Option A and option B, which Mr. McNaboe will go into. Along those lines, though, we also have witnesses that are going to testify to various components of what we're trying to do with option A and option B. We've got Mr. Zucker with the DOT, and we've got Mr. Percy with Game Fish and Parks. The reason that I have them as witnesses is because, one, option A and option B provide for a 90-degree crossing of the Mickelson Trail. My understanding from talking to Game Fish and Parks is that's a preferred type of crossing. Many of you will probably recall when we had our site visit approximately a year ago, there was a lot of traffic on the Mickelson Trail, and it was this time of year after Labor Day when the busy tourist season was completed. And so what we're trying to do is propose a crossing that creates the least amount of danger to the public in getting across the Mickelson Trail, and that's why I have Mr. Percy available. I have Mr. Zucker available in order to address any concerns relative to involvement with the DOT. There have been some proposals as well that have been raised as part of this process that involve the use of DOT right-of-way in order to provide an access to Cross Sabers. I want to address that with the DOT to confirm that their preference is not to have a trail going through their right-of-way for the reason that if there was any future road expansion, it would get into that area. Also, with the DOT, to address any future crossings that we would have that would limit that, and also, there's also some issues with sightline for some of the proposals that have been made. This has been a time-consuming process. We've done our best to try to keep this away from you. We've done our best to try to propose solutions that work. Unfortunately, we have not been able to come to any solutions that work. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McNaboe to address what we've got here, but as I mentioned, because we really have three items, we're asking to reopen and relocate the section line to either A or B, but he's also going to address the fact that this particular parcel is landlocked. In the event the commission were to say, we're not going to reopen and relocate the section line, he's going to establish the basis for number three, which is why this is an isolated tract under state statute. And as an isolated tract, Cross Sabers is entitled to access. The question is, where? And so Mr. McNaboe is going to address what we feel are those best two options, A or B. But at the end of the day, if the answer to A and B or one and two is no, that the commission is not going to reopen and relocate, there is a procedure. is not going to reopen and relocate, there is a procedure in place under statute that says as an isolated tract, Cross Sabers is entitled to access to that piece of property. And so we're going to address that as well as part of Mr. McNaboe's testimony.
Mr. Riggins, thank you, but we're going to try and stick to each item individually. So I mean, he can touch on them probably, but just remember that.
And, and I understand and I will do my absolute best to do that, but they're all three the same thing. I mean, the reality of it is, they're entitled to a point of access under state law. The question is, how do we get from A to B?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Cale McNaboe. I own Long Branch Civil Engineering. I represent the applicant Cross Sabers in this issue. I would like to bring forward a couple of exhibits that were prepared and are in your submittal package. Get this thing to launch. As discussed, what we're looking at, and this would be Cross Sabers Exhibit Number Three, we're talking about that portion, that 3.9 approximate acres of property that lies below the cliff face between the Mickelson Trail and the cliff face. This is Cross Sabers property. It's labeled site, so you can see the perimeter as shown on the first page of Cross Sabers, Figure Three. This is the previous section line highway. You can see the proximity to the storage units and this is the Silver Dollar facility. When we're looking at this, I've taken a look at options to access the property a number of different ways. And what I'd like to do is flip over to this exhibit. This is going to be Cross Sabers Exhibit Four. This is in your submittal package and it includes those items that are going to bore you to death, and that's cross-sections. What I've done is I've taken the available LiDAR data, which is contour data. This is the Mickelson Trail. And I have cut a total of 48 cross-sections on a 50-foot station through this property, starting the Mickelson Trail, coming down through the creek, up the cliff face, ending out into the Cross Sabers property. In some cases, you can see it's actually off of the property. What we're looking at here is a road profile, shows Mickelson Trail. I've inserted a concept culvert for it. It's the same culvert that's located in the DOT installed immediately upstream of this property. The DOT culvert crossing is 12 by 16 CMP. The culvert you see in this location located in the stern profile would be the same. So what we're looking at here is a profile that's established by County Ordinance 14. This is a typical section per County Ordinance 14. You'd have a 24-foot road surface, four-to-one in slopes, ditch bottom, out slopes. Again, that's county supplied ordinance, so that county establishes the cross-sectional view of the county road to meet criteria. Ordinance 14 also establishes slopes. This is a 12% max slope for that style of road. So 12% is established as county criteria. So when you start looking at getting down the cliff face, what you need to do is take into account that the channel, the existing channel, has a flow line to it. The culvert, which was again matching the DOT one immediately upstream, has approximately 18 inches of cover over top of it. You've established a proposed center line for the road that goes all the way up at 12%, which is the county's max grade until it catches. And then going back to Cross Sabers Exhibit Four, I've run these cross-sections on a 50-foot station down the Mickelson Trail. The catch points are shown in purple. You can see that down here, all these purple catch points are where that crossing in that 12% land on this property, with the exception of down here, it's off the Forest Service property and these things catch, or this off the Cross Sabers property and these catch on Forest Service property. So at a previous meeting, there was discussion of, well, there's the ravine here. We think you can access your lower tier lots through this ravine. That's, that would be cross-section, cross-section four plus 50. Now if I go back to if I go back to Exhibit Three, Cross Sabers Exhibit Three, this is that cross-section. You can see the extent to which, if this is existing terrain, that is 10, that's 20, about 28 foot of rock ex to get down to this 12% grade. That is what the grading template looks like when you run it. This green line would be the limits that you would have to excavate to get this road coming down at 12% to this cliff face across the culvert, which would have to exist in this location to get across. That's approximately 80,000 yards of cut by my math. That works out to just about $5.2 million. I don't see coming down the cliff face from Cross Sabers upper-tiered lots as a viable solution to obtaining access to the lower tier. If you're interested, like say Exhibit Four, Cross Sabers Exhibit Four includes the 48 cross-sections I ran, it'll bore you to death, but you can look through every one of them if you'd like. For the purposes of this demonstration, I'm probably not going to go through every cross-section. But if you want to, take a look at it, there's any, there's the catch points. So like I say, that's just over $5.4 million of X by my estimate. Option B, which we discussed and Quentin touched on, if this is a storage unit property and this is the Silver Dollar Saloon, would, would use the access, existing access DOT approved to Highway 16 to access the Silver Dollar Saloon, but would take an access that was granted by Silver Dollar across their property? And it would move essentially, the access would stay on the storage property, it would move to the north property line and that road alignment would look like this. It would cross the Mickelson Trail at a 90. It would land on Cross Sabers property and it does so without a creek crossing or the culvert. This option B is probably my, the second best option. I'm going to circle all the way back to Option A, but this option B involves two-to-one out slopes which don't meet county criteria, so variances would be needed. It requires retaining wall work. It also requires some grading up on the Silver Dollar Saloon property, which is, seems problematic from his standpoint, but it does cross the Mickelson. And that options about $380,000 worth of work. Now, we were tasked with last time, exploring the option of using their mother's access point, the access to her house and building the road that parallels the Mickelson Trail. Obstacles to this solution are, this is the Forest Service boundary right here. It comes down to a pinch point right there and back up. When I run the county's Ordinance 14 compliant road section through this corridor to try to get over to this isolated tract, which is over here, what I see is, you'd have to lay this slope back onto the Forest Service for a distance of about 277 feet. You'd have to take the trees, blast it, lay the slope back onto the Forest Service property to be able to punch county-level road through it. My concern with this alignment is the wet and spongy conditions, there's an intermittent stream that shows up on the National Land inventory map in that location. And again, we're on Cross Sabers Exhibit Three. So this option, including significant blasting to lay back the slope parallel to the Mickelson Trail, would also involve a culvert crossing because we're still on the wrong side of the creek. So if we're going to get over to this parcel of land that's essentially not accessible, would require several hundred feet of culvert crossing. There's a bridge on the Mickelson, but I think we'd be looking at a, at culvert crossing, probably the same 12 by 16 CMP. Problem, other problem with this example is that the existing bridge that leads to their, their mother's residence is a single lane bridge. So they would have to be upsized, new bridge, new bridge constructed. This looks as, appears to be, to be a non-feasible option. There's just too much road to build. You can see the grading limits are out in the Mickelson right of way again to be able to try to get a road through this location in the National Land inventory map. Another option which we would call probably C and was represented by, by the Storage Unit Group before, was a crossing on the Mickelson that would happen off of the Cross Sabers property utilizing this approach at the Silver Dollar Saloon. And their proposal was to use the road, the trail, if you will, that currently is, lies within the Highway 16 right of way. Use that trail. Again, none of these curves meet county ordinances, so there would be variances and those sorts of things required. It would also require involvement from the Silver Dollar Saloon because it's not constructable without a fill slope that lands on their property. This option would cross at a 90. I think you're going to hear, moving forward particularly from the Mickelson Trail entity, that I'm not comfortable with the crossing that's not a 90. There's just way too much traffic. We saw when we were out there standing in the Mickelson, how many times did we have to back up to let the bikers by? You know, a 60-degree crossing, I'm not going to participate in that. That's just not comfortable with it. But a 90-degree crossing, again, would not meet the curb radius per county criteria, so there would be variances required. But it would also involve the box culvert or culvert installation because obviously the fill slope goes across the creek. This also appears to be a not very viable solution. Anything that's going to involve a culvert crossing on the creek? We got FEMA involved because it's FEMA-regulated floodplain. We have the Core involved because it is again a wetland. So if you get over the nationwide permit, it would go up to an EPA action. So you're talking about at minimum FEMA, Core, full hydraulic study, plus the box culvert install. All of those things weren't required if we moved the crossing to the point that we don't hit that creek. So this option also has another issue which I'd like to point out and it's got, it's a, to build a county road at this location, at this secondary and pull the access off through, which is this location again, it's got an ash tow site distance problem that's associated with the guardrail. So it's, it's a site distance for oncoming traffic southbound on Highway 16. That's why I believe that this, excuse me, this option is probably not the best option. The 90-degree crossing, the FEMA, the involvement, the box culvert, the Core involvement. Certainly the 60-degree crossing, I would never be in support of that sort of a crossing. Lastly, we get to what I think is probably the best preferred location, if you will, and this was Option A. And the reason I think that is that there's an existing DOT-approved approach. There's a road bed constructed to this point and what you'd be looking at is essentially extending it over the top of the Mickelson Trail. Now the question becomes, is it constructable? And the best of which would be constructable. If you think about, you need to put five foot of fill on a road and the County Ordinance 14 tells you that it is four-to-one slopes. So if you're going to go up five feet and add a four-to-one, I need 20 foot this way to be able to build a four-to-one slope up to the road bed. But that's on each side, right? So there's 20 on this side, there's 20 on that side and it's a 24-foot road, so 20, 40, 60, you know, four feet, then we're back to 66 foot wide right of way, which I think ultimately is where this is headed to. And my biggest suggestion would be to look at an extension or relocation to this area which provides, which provides access to this parcel, this 3.9-plus acres, that doesn't involve box culvert install, or excuse me, doesn't involve the 12 by 16 CMP, doesn't involve floodplain modeling. It's just allows you access onto the property and the roads halfway there right now. I would estimate that's about $120,000 worth of improvements to get up over the top of the Mickelson Trail of that location. It's a 90-degree crossing. Like I say, it doesn't involve FEMA, Core, or those other entities. There probably would be some limited Core involvement with this because this looks like it is a wetland, I suspect would fall under the nationwide permit though.
And with that, I believe that I have covered approximately much as I wanted.
Thank you, Cale. Do I have Shannon Percy your next witness? Or who do you have?
Yeah, I would call Shannon Percy. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Shannon Percy, South Dakota Game Fish and Parks. I'm here to testify basically about the crossings on the Mickelson Trail. As stated earlier, we do prefer a 90-degree perpendicular crossing. Traffic is increasing more and more every day. So you know, which option? I'm not going to say options here, it's just where you guys land on a decision, then that will come forward to me and then I will pass that on to our administration staff up here for the approval to cross the Mickelson. But it's got to come from you folks first.
Thanks, thank you, Shannon. That's the extent of your whole.
Excuse me?
That's the extent of your whole testimony? Okay, thanks.
I would just like to ask you one question. I have to go to the mic, otherwise it's not going to be recorded.
I didn't ask you anything about the Mickelson Trail right of way. That's not something that you typically permit.
The right-of-way is considered state property, so inside that right-of-way would be considered. So the slopes, grades, culverts, drainage, all that would need to be considered in the crossing.
Correct. Also presently Cross Sabers has a permit which allows them to move livestock down the Mickelson Trail. What is the Game Fish and Parks position on allowing vehicle traffic down the trail itself?
Down the trail, when the trail is being developed, there are some landowners that are allowed to drive down the trail for that purpose. And they do have that, or they, they're allowed to do that. At this time, we are done granting access to anybody else driving down the Mickelson Trail because of traffic, as much traffic as there is.
So your position is the preference is to create a crossing at a 90-degree?
Correct.
That's on my head.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Your next witness?
I would have Rich Zucker.
Good afternoon, Richard Zucker. I'm the area engineer in Custer, responsible for access management on US 16. Okay. I'm here to testify that the DOT has looked at some of these access possibilities and in, and in reality, the only ones that we would approve are the existing ones. This option, of course, is an existing shared access point that we would approve.
Would be specific as to?
Oh, the one shown.
Yeah, use the pointer on, for the computer that you can show the accesses.
It would be Cross Sabers Exhibit Three.
There you go.
And I believe this is what Mr. McNaboe called Option C.
Yes.
Okay. So this is a shared access point. The, for the use of this, you know, all we would require for this is a change of use. 3.9 acres, I wouldn't see any reason why any sort of development on that 3.9 acres would change any of our views on that, you're not going to put Walmart there. So, so we would approve this and the other existing access points as well. We did evaluate access at the, at the, the, what used to be the section line location and we would deny that access based on three criteria. The first one being access spacing requirements. It does not meet the 660 feet that is required for access spacing. It does not meet the 520 feet for site distance. And in the view of the DOT, the access shown now is, is access that exists. So for those three criteria, we would deny access at the, at what used to be the section line.
Mr. Chair, can I get clarification? Would that be exhibit? Which exhibit would that one be on our maps? Just so I make sure I have the right one.
I'll let Cale address that, just to make sure I get it right. I'll let Kale address that, just to make sure I get it right.
Yeah, that is actually, let me reduce that. That is gonna be Cross Sabers Exhibit Five, which shows up in the master plan.
That's one of our last pages.
Yeah. Rotate this guy. We don't wanna do that. They don't have, well.
That is the one, yeah, yep, that's the exhibit, so.
Just to clarify a couple of points that you made, Mr. Zucker. Were you here when we discussed Exhibits A and B as well?
Yes.
And Exhibit A was a crossing or approach that's currently existing and accessing storage units? And DOT would not have an issue with access at that point, is that correct?
We would not.
Ex, or, excuse me. Option B would have been to utilize Exhibit One, which is the easement that Chem LLC for the Silver Dollar granted to Cross Sabers. DOT would not have any issue using that approach either as well, correct?
We would not for that option as well.
And going back to that Option C that was just up a minute ago, you could see from that point of access, the proposed trail crossed and would have been within the DOT right of way. Do you see that particular crossing? Would the DOT have an issue with a roadway being within that right of way for that length of road?
We would not. In fact, it was constructed with the highway project in eighty-one.
The
That actual trail was part of our grading project.
And so if there was any future expansion of the highway, would that present any issues?
We'd have to look at the design, so we would not wanna dig into our in slope at all, so the expansion would have to go onto the Cross Saber property.
That was the other question, yes. Is there any issue with the site distance that Mr. McNabb was showing on this particular portion of, what exhibit is this?
That would be Cross Sabers Exhibit Three.
Cross Sabers Exhibit Three, which shows the sightline view from that particular approach.
I haven't looked at this myself, but Kale mentioned that it was due to the guardrail placement?
Yeah, it was a replacement.
Yeah, that would have to be addressed at that point. In fact, we should look at it now that Kale brings it up.
Okay, I'm not following all this, so it looks like you're talking between yourselves, so maybe I'm the only one that's not following all what you're talking about, because you're going from Exhibit Three to this to something else. Is everybody else following it, or am I missing something?
This is Exhibit Three as well, which shows the sightline, which is the dotted line at the top in the aerial photograph. It's radiating out from that approach point, so it can show what the sightline issues are. And I'll let Kale go ahead and address those from the engineering standpoint.
We're not map readers. I'm not trying to say anything, but point out where all this is, this is this is the saloon, this is where the bridge is, this is where Dipwiler is.
You bet.
See, that means one oh one map reading today if we could.
Yep, Kale again, long range civil engineering. We're looking at Cross Sabers Exhibit Three. So this is the Silver Dollar Saloon right now. The storage units would actually be located on this parcel. Highway sixteen. If you parked a vehicle right here, there, there are ash tow requirements for site distance based upon vehicle travel speeds. So what I've done is I've established, if you had a vehicle parked in that location at that elevation, which is three and a half foot above the road surface, they have to be able to look up the highway a certain distance to be able to see oncoming cars traveling fifty miles an hour, as well as traveling northbound fifty miles an hour. So what I do is I have a centerline profile of Highway sixteen. I've taken it right off the LiDAR and plotted it right here. And that is the centerline of Highway sixteen. This is your eye, if you're sitting in your car at that intersection, that's the guardrail. And what this is depicting is, looking upstream towards northbound traffic, I can see full ash tow sight distance, I can see a car, which their eye is also three and a half feet above the centerline of the road. Our eye, that oncoming car, fifty miles an hour, is meeting, meeting your eye at three and a half foot above the deal, and you can see that car coming. But when I run that same scenario, because Highway sixteen is diving down, and the guardrail picks up around here and follows the highway. The problem is, your eye is sitting here and you're looking, you can't see that oncoming car because you're looking at the guardrail. That's what it was intended to predict.
Thank you, that's easier to read when you're saying it, and so we can understand it. Thank you.
I don't believe I have any other questions for you. At this particular time, I would reserve the remaining time that I have, and I'd love this matter to move ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Riggins. So at the, at this point in time, I will go to staff. Do the staff have any comments for Riggins and?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Joe Miller, Plank County Highway Department. Just wanna point out one, one fact here. Kale has presented to you ordinance fourteen, which is for a public road, in which, talking to Brittany with planning and zoning, this road that needs to be constructed would not need to be a public road. It could be a driveway of ten foot, twelve foot, whatever the applicant would, might, might need. So while Kale, everything that he's presented is accurate, it may not be needed for access to the parcel.
Thank you, Joe. Is there any other staff comments? You'll have a rebuttal at the end. Seen any more, no more staff comments? Is there any questions or comments from the board at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
Kale, you mentioned three options, A, B, C. But I don't, what's the cost got to do with it? Is there a state statute that says we gotta go with the cheapest if we have to go one of those routes? That's the part I don't understand. It's just gotta be legal, right? The cost would be the, the applicant would have to bear the cost, no matter what option we went with is. So, yeah, a lot of emphasis on cost, I just don't understand
Sure.
how we're supposed to take that and treat it.
Well, it, it has to be a reasonable point of access. I mean, you could demolish Mount Rushmore into a pile of rocks and drive right over top of it, but that's not reasonable. And so if it costs five million dollars and you have to completely demolish an entire hillside to reach it, it's not a reasonable point of access. So that's what we're, what we're bringing up the cost for.
Is that
Because you are correct, it'll be upon my client to build the roadway. It's just illustrated to say, one, in order to access from the upper point of their property down and meet grade requirements, you're gonna have to remove five million dollars worth of rock to do that. And second, according to the charts that Kale went through, there are many spots along that rock removal where it can't even be done without leaving their property and traveling under US Forest Service.
So the isolated parcel, do we have the highest and best use of that? What, what it will be zoned and, and what it will be used for once its access is developed, if that's the case?
Well, at this particular point, there's no highest and best use. They could reopen it as a zoo. They could build three houses on it, which would require that they have roadways up to county specifications that Kale mentioned. Yes, it can be a private driveway, but if we have three houses on it, it can't. And so they haven't made a final decision as to what they're going to do with it, but at this particular point, they can't do anything with it. So that's why it's isolated.
But it's just an isolated parcel, three point some acres, but it really isn't a parcel that has a Pennington County ID number. It's part of a larger parcel. Is that correct?
It is part of a larger parcel, but according to statute, an isolated track does not have to be a separate parcel. It can be within the original parcel, as long as there's portions of it that are unable to be accessed. It would still qualify under state statute as an isolated.
I understand. I just want the other Commissioners to realize that this is not a platted parcel that has the county ID.
Correct.
So I understand that it is still, could be considered an isolated tract.
Yep.
So on this site, you have, and you're right, Mr. Riggins. It is on a bigger piece of property, but there is no access on that bigger piece of property to get to it. Isn't it the one by the bridge, how they do access their property already?
They can access it for the limited use of bringing livestock to it on horseback or on I don't even know if they can do it on a UTV, I'd have to speak to them, but they can't go there with a, with a motorized vehicle, car, or a pickup.
So it wouldn't be just this piece isolated, would it be the whole bigger piece? So how are you going to, are you gonna? I guess you, you have the piece we're talking about today, but the whole bigger piece, how is that going to be accessed without?
They, they do have an existing roadway which can go above to that upper piece until you hit that cliff face. So they do have a point of access to a portion of the property. It's just the smaller track that has no point of access whatsoever for vehicular traffic.
Okay, so, and a good point by our highway department, and I thought about it already when you kept talking public road. Section line is a public road, so we'd be open as a section line to make it a public road, but it could be a private driveway and made to those standards if it was just for one piece, and then that's why I asked you if it was going to be something that would be pertaining to the other piece, the big picture or the bigger track of land, because it would be more public, because they would be putting development or more houses or more something on it. At this point, I agree with the highway department, and thought about it myself, that it's not going to be a public road, it's going to be a person's driveway. Or, three, whatever you do on that property, as you say, the zoo or three pieces of parcel, or housing development, it would be a private driveway. So we have done this before, Mr. Riggins, and we have made variances and different things through our planning department to make those roads that don't have to have four to one slopes and, and all of those standards that we need to do in order to get to a certain property, because we have to do that. Not only in this case, we would need to do it, we have done it many times because of drainage, because of other issues in order to get to a track of land. So literally, the cost would be depending on if you do ordinance fourteen standards or you do a driveway which has a gravel road that has something that's accessible, but still health, safety, and welfare in mind of it.
That's correct, and I know Mr. McNabb, when he looked at this, looked at the possibility of subdivisions, which is why we're trying to meet county specifications, because we can't ask for a variance for something we don't even have yet.
Yes.
I can tell you that there's been extensive discussions relative to trying to work out an agreement to find a point of access that have revolved around narrowing the scope of that. We've not come into this saying it absolutely has to be sixty-six feet. We've tried to work with the opposition to get a private driveway and been unsuccessful to this point.
But why I'm saying that, as you said, highest and best in order to get to the bottom line numbers, I understand the cliff would be five point four million dollars. If I build an ordinance fourteen standards road, might cost me one point five, but if I buy it, do a driveway, it might cost me two hundred and fifty thousand. So depending on how I build that and what's the, like you said, you have to do it to meet ordinance fourteen standards. But if you look at possibilities in the way we've done driveways in the past to people's houses, that gives you still the access you need to get to it and still not have to be ordinance fourteen standards.
And I can let Kale address the specific ramifications of the crossing off the top, just because I think there's still such a significant amount of rock that would need to be removed, that he can address that in particular.
Yeah, again, Kale, long range civil engineering. Yeah, the discussion about can we steepen up the road, could we take it from a twenty-four foot surface down to a fifteen foot surface? Well, even if you're talking about, let's talk about taking it to a fifteen foot surface, but we still have this five foot fill, which we talked about.
Not trying to stop you, but are we talking about the first access or the second one by the bridge?
Oh, if you wanna talk about, if you wanna talk about coming off the top of the cliff, the top of the cliff with a driveway?
No, the cliff would be probably five point four million or more, that's unimaginable.
Because the
The one what I'm talking about is either the one before the saloon or the one af- after would either be, or could be, a driveway and not have to be sixty foot, six foot right of way, wouldn't have to be a fourteen foot wide road. Either one of those, for health, safety, and welfare, for a driveway is not gonna cost the same as if you did ordinance fourteen standards, if you did a sixty-six for right of way.
Yeah, and this is a good example. This would be cost number two, or, excuse me, this is Cross Sabers Exhibit Three.
Right.
Let's call it B. Not A, but this is B. This relocating it up to the north edge of the storage unit property.
Right.
South of the Silver Dollar.
Yep.
And the discussion is, well, we don't need to build it to ordinance fourteen standard, but in this case, it has no ditches. That plan has no ditches on it at all, so it doesn't matter whether we're talking about ditches. All you're looking at is the two to one slope that bombs into the side of the road. So if you wanted to decrease this road width from twenty-four feet to twenty feet, it's not gonna have really any ramifications, because it's a two to one coming out of it. So this scenario has no ditches anyway. So whether we build it to county standard, you're only talking about, what's the width of the road? Are we gonna take it from twenty-four to twenty, or what's a reasonable number for three driveways? Is it a twenty foot wide driver? So we saved four foot of gravel, but we didn't save any of the grading really, because it's essentially, the road's just four foot narrower and didn't have any ditches on it to start with.
And how about north of it? That already has access that they use or have used in the past.
So if we go down to this, this thing?
And I understood the bridge location and the site location, I'm talking about just building the road, not?
Yeah, yeah, so let's, this is a good example. This would be number C. Again, this is Silver Dollar. That's the access point where there's kind of a site distance issue.
Or bridges.
If you were to build this one grading back into the Highway sixteen right of way and onto the Silver Dollar property, this road again, has, this grading plan has no ditches on it. It's just the embankment that we were talking about, right? So it, once again, we're not talking about the difference between an ordinance fourteen road and a non-ordinance fourteen road with ditches. We're talking about the width of the road. You wanna take it from twenty-four to twenty? It's gonna move that green line in two feet, and that one in two feet.
Well, when we walked it, Caleb, we walked down, we walked to the north, which was a little bit flatter, almost in that right of way. Then we came around where it was flatter, towards the bottom, so it wasn't like this, it was actually kinda gradually getting into it, and then we went to the back, which is flat. By the, by the fence line.
Oh, you're talking
Remember, on the north side by the bridge? So the bridge, you came down, if you're up north of the slo- salon, saloon, I'm a salon. Uh, saloon, you went down, right, to the right of the bridge. If you're going north, and you're going north still, so you go down that slope, and then you come, and that, I didn't think that slope was very high. Meaning for, I, I've seen driveways go up hills this high, I've seen them go down. I've seen all kinds of driveways in order for people to make access to their houses. So what I'm saying is, I've, I've never always, well, bottom line is, I haven't seen the ordinance fourteen standards on a lot of driveways in order to get where they need to go. So it goes north, it comes kind of round a little bit. Me and Joe walked it that day with you guys. We walked there first. He's an engineer, he's a civil engineer as well as a highway department, then he came around to the back where it was flatter. So do they, do Hendersons own that? Because behind there, I thought they did, when it comes down a little bit around to the right of the
I, I think you're talking about the trail that goes entirely through the Silver Dollar property.
Nope, it goes north into the, it goes to the right in the right of way. You were talking about the right of way with the bridge.
It's, yeah, that is the existing road that's in the right of way.
Right.
And there's the switchback, and here's the crossing that we were talking about.
Right. Right.
That's the 90-degree crossing.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you were going to not go to ordinance 12 standards, and you were going to try to steepen up the road, yeah, you could go from 12 to safely 15%. You wouldn't get over 15, or you're not going to make it up there in the winter.
So who owns all that land right there that you have an degree?
Cross Sabers owns this, the Silver Dollar owns this, and the DOT owns that portion of it.
Okay, so you'd just stay on Cross Sabers, and then you'd be, you'd have an access on it, right?
No, not through there. You'd still need to get onto Silver Dollar property to build the out slope on it, and you'd have to fill in the creek.
I would just, you'd have to go across the creek.
No, there's, so as soon as you cross, this pink line is the edge of the Mickelson Trail right-of-way. So if we're going to cross it at a 90, it's got to go 90 to the trail, the entire width of the easement, and then take a hard right turn. But by the time you take this hard right turn, I'm telling you that the edge of the road is right out over the edge of the creek.
Even if it's short, even if it's narrower as a driveway rather than the?
Yeah, so that's 24 foot. That, I guess that's what I was saying is, this is 24 foot, and if you say, hey, let's narrow it to 20 so it's, you can run two cars each direction, you've knocked four feet off of it. You've moved this green line to back, you know, say, four feet. It's still over the top of the creek. You're still putting a culvert in the creek. Because you're hooked at this elevation of the Mickelson Trail, which is a lot higher than that elevation. You've got to get the road over the top of it through the corner. So if this is at elevation 100, I'm only going to get down maybe two feet by this corner.
Okay, but I think no matter what you do, you're hitting wetland, FEMA, and hydraulic study on whether, whatever access you're talking about. So trying to figure it out, you just have to go across the creek, don't you?
No, this one doesn't cross the creek. And that's why option A was, I believe, the best option. Oh, sorry. I believe option A is the best option.
And that's the southern part of that.
Yeah, it uses the storage unit crossing. Here's the creek. It's over here. I'd like to get rid of that. Um, yeah, the creek is way over here. This is the Mickelson Trail. We're talking, just, let's just cross it. And as soon as we're on this side, we're not crossing the creek.
So between the FEMA, basically the floodway, the right-of-way, which is 100 feet on Mickelson, how much buildable space do you have that we're talking about that we need to build a driveway to?
Yeah, so if we're talking about the property.
How much space is left, Caleb, to build on?
The edge of the Mickelson Trail right-of-way.
Okay.
To the edge of the FEMA-regulated hydraulic floodway, leaves 3.9 acres in there.
Okay, and plus the setbacks.
Yeah, but they're still, you can, they're still your yard. I mean, yeah, you're going to have.
Setbacks from, setbacks from floodway, setbacks from a Mickelson Trail, and then you need to also build a road across it.
But you're, if we're, we're back to talking about a driveway to a couple of.
That's what I'm saying.
It's not a, I guess our point is, it's not a throwaway parcel. It's still 3.9 acres either way you look at it. And to say that, oh, you just, you don't need it.
I didn't say we didn't need it. I just said, by the time you do the setbacks and stuff, Caleb, that's where I'm talking about, that you wouldn't bu- build a 14, ordinance 14 standards on it.
Okay.
You would need a lot of variances probably to build on it.
Yeah.
It's not unbuildable, I can say, but there's a lot of variables put into play to try to figure out that, we need to figure out basically a road or a driveway to a parcel that we vacated a section line that actually the DOT was in agreement with us, so.
Yeah, and there's, there's potential to go with something narrower in the option A location. Uh, my only concern was the fill in the slope. I mean, it just, we still have to be able to get up over the Mickelson. So if the Mickelson's still on five foot, maybe we get an exception to go with a narrower rope. Maybe it's more like a driveway and it's a 20 footer, and we call the in slopes to it three-to-one. So if you were on five foot of fill at a three-to-one, that's 15 foot on this side, 15 foot on that side, you got a 20-foot road down the middle.
So by the time you build a road or even a driveway on there, you're going to have to have basically walls to hold up the, the road.
You do it all with a dirt slope. So you just take the, the dirt down to catch at that three-to-one or four, preferably four-to-one, so it's stable. But if you press it, you go to a three-to-one slope and daylight it, and then you put a culvert in this location.
Yep.
And then that road just pops right up over the top, and they got access. And I think that's ultimately was the whole point, is before, they felt like they had access to this property that didn't involve FEMA or the Corps or a giant box or a giant culvert.
Right.
And they want to get back to the point that they have access that doesn't involve those three things.
Okay, thank you, Caleb.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on here, I think a follow-up.
Highway.
You've seen what I've seen.
Yeah, highway.
Ms. Hancock would like to ask Joe and Planning to come up.
And our planning. Introduce yourselves, guys.
Uh, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department.
Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director.
So I just, when I, when I was referring to ordinance 14, and Kale, I don't know if you've realized, but ordinance 14 has since been amended since this started.
Joe, could you please just let us know what's up on the screen for the record?
Uh, up on the screen is, Jason will be pulling up the floodplain map and FEMA map, I believe, correct, Jason?
Correct.
So I just wanted to point out that ordinance 14, since this whole thing has started, it was amended last year in July. So the curve radius, Kale, the curve radius on the north access, north of Camp LLP or LLC, north of the Silver Dollar Saloon there, you laid out 100-foot radius going across Mickelson, is that correct?
It sounds correct, yes.
Okay, so that is, with ordinance 14 being amended, say you put a private access easement in there, and you go to a 15 mile an hour road, the turn radius is now 40 feet. It's a much steeper, tighter turn radius. It doesn't have to be 100-foot turn radius. Your in slopes and your, your back slopes can also be steeper, along with your road top being narrower. So looking at the cross-sections that you provided for that, and mind you, we haven't done the engineering and the survey data or any of that to prove it, it appears that a private access easement, which Jason, would be up to two lots or three lots?
Up to two.
Would be up to two lots. So two houses would be, be able to be accessed by that private access easement coming off of the Highway 385 through Cross Sabers.
So another question, sorry. So, Jason, so we walk that, Jason, or Jason, Caleb just said, trying to go on that right-of-way, remember where you walked it north, and you walked kind of in a circle, whatever, and that, he said that that turn that you just explained, we've changed the radius, we've changed some of that. Do you think at that point, then, you could do, and Jason, do a private access easement on that property, for this property, so it would have access on the Henderson property?
I, you know, I haven't done the engineering on it, but judging by the cross-sections that were provided by Caleb from, I believe, 2020, I believe was the cross-section that were done on that set access, judging by those, the crossing of the Mickelson to the creek, I think is where your, your biggest hangup is. If you make that turn radius tighter and your in, pull your in slopes in, make your road top narrower, it appears that one could probably fit a driveway in, get across Mickelson at a 90 and get onto that other parcel to access a home or two.
Thank you, because I had visited with you before then, only because we had walked that, Joe walked that with Jason. I did forget we changed the, some of the private access easement. I think Jason had told me that before, but I forgot again. There's a lot to remember, and it's good information for our board, because they probably told them too, and we just, we have a lot of information. But anything you could share with us as well, Jason?
Right, I just wanted to pull this up on the screen. I, sorry, I can't remember what exhibit that was for, for this option cutting across the Reno Gulch property, being their option A, I guess. But I just wanted to note that there are wetlands here. There are emergent wetlands in this area, and then also that driveway would come straight across into the floodway. So there would be a significant amount of work to do there to, to make that happen.
Okay, so that's kind of what we're talking about, Board, that FEMA, hydraulic study, and wetland on option A that we just talked about with Caleb, is a pretty significant difference for cash flow and disturbance, so.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, I got Mr. Roskin next, and then I'll go to Mr. Laster.
Yeah, I just, Quentin, I got one question for, Commissioner Hancock asked you how many approaches there were to the larger parcel, and you said one. Are you not recognizing the approach, which would be option C, which Rich Jacker just indicated that that was legal access to the Henderson property?
It, it's legal access, but there's not an easement to access it for my clients. They would have to have an easement for Mr. Enu for that particular piece. We've got an easement for the other approach. So as it sits right now, we don't have access to that point.
But there's a possibility you could access it off of 385. Just have to go through the application.
I would have to get an easement from him, or we'd have to be right back here trying to condemn the access somewhere else from some other landowner.
Follow-up to that. Rich, I believe I asked you before, but do you happen to know the right-of-way width of 385 at that point?
Right off the top of my head, I don't.
So I believe if you measure it on rapid map, which we're on here, which isn't necessarily accurate, right? It's not survey accurate, but you can get kind of a, a rough idea.
Not right side, Joe.
And here, we're, we're on rapid map. It's 125 feet or 120 feet is probably what you're.
Probably more.
Is currently, you know, so when we were out there, we did measure from the center line of the road to get an approximation, and it does appear that you could get off of Highway 385 onto the said gravel driveway here and on Henderson's property without any sort of easement.
And that's why I just wanted to make sure that we understood that, to me, you know, there's a good possibility that there's two legal accesses, that one being the one that we just talked about.
Yes, again, the only easement that exists is Exhibit One to the Cross Sabers documents, and so that one is to access from the other point of access that we've been addressing for option B.
Done?
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Laster.
So reading 3122-1, I've got some questions to understand. As far as I understand, they have access to the whole parcel, right? The whole large parcel of 22-something acres currently. So by 32, by 3122-1, it is not considered an isolation, isolated track. When it would become an isolated track, the 3.9 acres is if they decided they wanted to replat it down in there. But I think, in technicality, that's them deciding to plot it, even though knowing they don't have access unless they get access, but I don't think we should be forced to give them public access. I, I'm just, it doesn't, it's for private use as a, as a home. And as I read that, I just want to make sure I'm kind of following along with the state law, because they already got access to it, so you can't even say that it's an isolated track, even if they're trying to say that it's an isolated track to get the, the, the access to it, because an isolated track is if it's at least 10 acres, not touch by passable public highway, but public highway. Well, the whole 22-whatever acres is, and then if you take that 3.9 acres, it has to be greater than five acres for it to be for, for residential, to be considered isolated. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of lost in what we're, other than saying that it's isolated or not isolated, and if it's not isolated, then we should.
Shouldn't, it's not an issue then.
So we do, we do have one, two, three, three more presentations to go through, and I'm, and I mistakenly didn't do this, I should have read what the item is.
Okay, do you know?
What's that?
Ask Jay, because that's a good point, if it asks, if it's going to be residential or anything, and they're trying to make it residential, does it have to be five acres to be isolated? And at this point, Travis just brought up some good points, and maybe we're missing something, Jay.
But I think we ought to stick to the schedule.
Yeah, that's.
And keep going through as I laid out.
Yeah.
But we're going to get to those.
Isolation track at the end and so forth.
But if they go all, sorry, Chair, just a point. If we go all through this and we find out that you can't call an isolated track unless it's five acres, and this is 3.9, isn't it moot and pointless to have everybody go through the process if it's not?
Well, right now, we're only on item six, which is the question of reopening the section line. So we will get to the legal question of whether it's an isolated track later.
I was just going to read that when everybody.
Sorry, Chairman, I am disrupting.
Get past it as well.
3.9 is just the developable portion, but it's far greater than five total. So again, they could turn it into a zoo, in which case, they've got an isolated track that's more than five acres total. It's just developable for homes that puts it under five.
Okay, I'm going to read, reread item six. It's, and I, and I should have addressed this at the very beginning, when, when you said you, you, we need to talk all three at once, and this is how it gets convoluted as we go through this. Right now, on item six is what we are talking about, is to reopen section line right-of-way, RS 2201, Cross Sabers LLP, applicant Darren Raines, owner, long branch civil engineering and agent. This is to open a previously vacated section line right-of-way between section one and section 36 TSC. So that's what we're discussing right now, and we still got three more, and then we'll go back. So at this point, is there any further questions from the Commission to Cross Sabers on the reopening section line away?
Mr. Chair, maybe I just have one, dealing with that particular piece. If somebody from Cross Sabers can tell me, how is it in the public's interest to open up that right-of-way?
So a- as it relates to what we're trying to do relative to the section line, there, there was a public right-of-way there that was vacated. We're just asking to reopen it and, and put it in another location. So our position is, there was a public right-of-way. We want to bring it back.
Mr. Chair, follow-up. I understand that, but there was a determination of that, that was a beneficial public access, for whatever reason in the past. None of us were up here that did that. But now we're saying we want to reestablish a public access. It's got to be beneficial to the public. My question is, how can you justify that this is beneficial to the public, regardless what it was in the past? If we're going to reestablish something, if we're going to take land from somebody and make damages, how is it beneficial to the public to do that at this point in time?
And, and I understand your question. I guess where I'm at with it is, there was a section line right-of-way. The opposition asked to vacate it so they could make use the rest of their property. So they were essentially saying then, me as a private individual should supersede the rights of the public and have more use of my own land. What we're saying is, it should go back to the way it was, and he's not giving up anything that he didn't already have dedicated to the public prior to the vacation.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions from the Commission? No, no further questions. I will go next up in line, which is the Reno Gulch Storage, Mr. Raines.
Good evening, my name's Cole Romi. I'm an attorney for Mr. Raines. So we do kind of, we're trying to stick to the schedule here, but we're a little bit of at a disadvantage. We might try to just tackle the first issue here without jumping into the entire issue of isolated tract, right? Because stepping back, you asked the question about public interest. That's what it's about, whether we locate, whether that's reopening and relocating, I'm just going to say locate, whether we locate a easement. So this Commission needs to decide, and that's under SDCL 3136, whether it's in the public interest. And we would say that it's not, so that we can get to the ultimate question, which is what most of the presentation has already been about, whether it's an isolated tract. So as you are pretty aware, this is planned to serve one parcel. Of course, it's kind of theoretical at this point, as. at this point, as the Commission is kind of aware. You know, this is a little parcel in a floodplain with not much residential area to build a property. I believe planning and zoning has already determined that it's not in public interest. Also, this Commission has previously determined it's not in the public interest. And I would defer to public planning and zoning for that specific exhibit. I can't find it, but there's a letter in the packet that says that. So at this point, we would just be asking the Commission to deny this reopening and relocating. And we can get into engineering and all of that, but I think that that would be better served doing that with the isolated tract. However, if the Commission does make a decision on this, we would like to put on our engineering case, but it seems a little bit disjointed. I would like Mr. Rains to come up and speak specifically. Mr. Rains has a unique background and experience in this matter, and that's why I'd like him to speak also as to this. Yeah, he has a background in road building, significant road building. And I think it's helpful, you know, for the Commission to hear from him. He's the affected landlord. He's going to be the most affected in this process. And so I think I'd like to have him talk to you about how it would, locating this easement on his property would be detrimental to his interest. And let's face it, what's the actual interest here? It's for the private residential person, or the zoo owner, or whoever is on Lot 11. So that's going to be who's going to be impacted. It's a private interest. That is not a public interest. Now, the Frawley case, I don't know if you're familiar with the Frawley case, but it does speak about this, but that was in the confines of a constitutional challenge to this whole process. That is not what we're doing today. That case does speak as to private and public use, and it does say something about that. But we would be making the argument that this is different, different context, and that this is strictly just a private use, that they're trying to get a publicly dedicated highway, which is a section line highway. So at this time, I would like Mr. Rains to come up, if he could, and just address the, address the Commission regarding this. If he does go into other areas, just forgive us. We've got a lot already happening, so.
And I'll just remind you that we will have that coming up at the end.
Very good. If you don't mind, I'm going to have my son hit the numbers so I can stay focused on my presentation here and my outline. Where do we get back to?
And you are, you need to identify yourself.
Excuse me. Darren Rains, I'm the landowner of Reno Gold Self Storage, and this is my son, Zeb Rains. Is this the full packet here?
No.
Here.
Okay, go ahead.
Is it 400?
Okay.
Well, there's so much in this, and still I scratch my head trying to figure out, you know, why they're doing all this for what they're asking for, when they have so many different options to build a road. It's just, some of the stuff that I've developed, I would have been tickled to death to have one of those points. So I'm going to go into some of this and try to make it as quick as I can. It is not in the interest to reestablish a section line that's been vacated. It's at a busy turn right there at the bar, at a bad location, and I believe that's why SDOT is refused to reopen any type of access there. So I can't see any way, shape, or form how it would be of public interest. And when we purchased this property, we gave a lot of money for it. We counted on what you guys had decided to make our decision. If we have to allow them to take the north part of our property, it's going to cost us at least $200,000 in field dirt that we can no longer take and use from our property. Trying to get through this. And a little out of order here, but they're talking about now wanting to relocate it to the center of our property. The center of our property is our access, and it's not even the best. We talked about possibly asking SDOT if they'd let us move it further south. So it's a little bit flatter, especially for the winter months, and we're coming down on a hill off of the road ourselves. But also, that goes right into where we have to locate our detention pond. Our engineers have told us the county's not requiring detention for our building pads and stuff. So that area right there, which I'll pull up a picture of here in a minute to show you just real quickly, is the area where we would place our detention pond. It would also take them through a wetland, as was rightly pointed out, because we're having to deal with this just for our detention pond. It would also stop us from having a secured facility, which we want to gate and secure the facility for our customers. I think the codified law, I think, you know, reading that really helps, because it doesn't qualify as an isolated track anyway. It has to be 10 acres, minimum of five acres, and it has to be for residential purpose. They've never subdivided it. They've never rezoned it to residential. They've never done anything really other than just speculate and come up with these different ideas of this and that. Even where they put their subdivision up in the back, which they haven't platted or subdivided yet or requested it, it goes through an existing easement where they're putting their lots, existing easement that hasn't been vacated on their property, is where they've got their cutouts up there. I want to try to stay in order here.
Your doom pond.
It just scratched my head. When you read that, it doesn't qualify. It's part of a bigger track. It hasn't been subdivided. It has to be, you know, 10 acres or more. They're under five acres. It doesn't even qualify, in my opinion, to be heard, because it's part of the bigger track, which they obviously have access to. So they're sitting here saying 3.9 some acres or whatever. Of course, it seems like it's always a moving target. Can you put 157 on there? This, is that 157? Okay. This is one of the points that Ron Bings, our engineer now, is where they showed the access going, oh, but you can look down there. This is looking right toward their property. Filling in this area down there could be done with two or three truckloads of dirt and culvert. You know, making a path across there, they can put a 90-degree angle of a private road, whatever they want to do. Can you pull it up 168? Okay, now, I went to the trouble to build this diagram. These show different points of access. Well, right here, the Fed's USDA Agriculture Department didn't say they wouldn't give, grant an easement. They have 70 foot there. They have plenty of width to begin with for a private drive. But they said they would grant a variance if they showed basically discriminate, demonstrated need, is my understanding. Can you hear me all right? So this is just one path I showed. I've seen so many paths, it's just crazy. So these paths here, they act like this is sheer cliff. It's not. I could take my wife's Jeep up this, her road Jeep. If you knocked a couple of trees down, boulders, I was looking at it today. I showed our engineer and our attorney. You stand on the trail and look at this, that is a very easy slope to build a road on.
And just for the record, this is, comes from Mr. Darren Rains' letter. It's a map exhibit to that, just for the record.
These others are doable. This one's a little bit longer, gives you a longer slope. And they, when we had a conference call with them last time, the only thing they could tell me, their engineers, was that, well, it may run out of room going to the east before they take on a slope. I said, we'll just curve your road to the north. I've never heard any different talk about that. You don't have to go into a dump truck to remove all this dirt at $5 million. You can push it down a hill, push it to the side, use it to make your road. It's doable. But they haven't even really shown any serious interest, in my opinion, of doing this. And then you get over here, this road coming here, there's multiple ways you can build this road, multiple angles, that you can put this road in across, or especially as a private road. I think you could do it as a public road if you just wanted to be stubborn. But it doesn't have to hug the highway. It could go down here and cross over them down here, where they have an existing gate here and an existing gate here. Let me put page 20. Here's what they showed, contours coming across the trail. But in essence, what they've done is shown where you can build a road. These contours are doable, and I strongly disagree $5,000. We've had to develop pieces of property and land on our own at various points out of our own pocket. We've had to bring in tracos and 5,000-pound hammers and blasts and stuff. There's no way I can see that costing $5 million. An actual slope north of that little bit would be an easier one to do it on. I am saying this with some experience. I just wanted to point out that I've done this a long time. I worked as a heavy equipment operator for Carson Building and everything stuff back in 1986. So I have done this in various locations on the country. I do know what's involved there. And if this was truly an isolated track in any way, shape, or form, I probably would be more sympathetic to it, to be quite honest. But it's clearly not. I think about the old saying, the emperor doesn't have clothes on. Trying to call this an isolated track is like saying the emperor, the Danish fairy tale, that he doesn't have clothes on, or that he has clothes on, when obviously he didn't. This is just so clearly not an isolated track in any way, shape, or form. Let me put on 114, please. I guess, you know, most of this point is really already been made, and I think made well. This is one way you could put a road in. I'm going to talk real quickly about the easement of the bar here in a minute, which I'm trying to understand that, so. But I think that point's been made where that could very easily be done with a private road, a culvert down in there. All pieces of land, you know, would present some type of a challenge. I, it seems like, not to put their engineers down, but it just seems like they're almost been hired to find ways you can't do it. We always hire engineers to find ways that you can do it, and we'll even challenge them. Well, can we do this? Can we do that? Let me put 170 on. Now, this, this is a bit puzzling. This is an easement that the bar has given them. Well, it's, first of all, it's supposed to be for a private road, not a public road. And it's supposed to be, I guess, at one point, maybe still by our property. But the problem is, is this easement was given six months or so after the section line had been vacated. So I can't understand how you can give an easement to a vacated section line. I can't understand how that makes sense. And it also says that it's one in use, basically. You know, so I don't understand that the one on us is definitely not going on to us, is definitely not in use. The one on the north side of the ball, the Hendersons have their own property that they can access on, as we just demonstrated a little bit ago. Matter of fact, if you draw that line out straight, a good part of that entrance up there that the SDOT has allowed is on the Henderson's property. The bar has used it, but in fact, a good portion of it is already the Henderson's property, not required easement. Let me put it on one, where is that page? 171, please.
I just remind everybody to please, again, try to identify what you're talking about. So you're just saying here or there, like the exhibit, identify the easement, maybe the date on it, the easement was between who and who, just so we have a clear reference.
This vacated easement, which is not vacated over here, up there where they're showing their lots, the subdivision, they want to do, potentially is not vacated. So the easement that it was granted from the bar can't be here, because this is not an existing in-use easement. And it wouldn't make any sense to give an easement after a section line had been vacated. It's my understanding that Hendersons didn't protest to this vacant section line until six months after it was vacated. So this up here is hard to understand how this could be it, because they basically have their own access to the Hendersons anyway. You can see old existing easements down through history, and I don't know if that's what's meant. I don't really know what's meant, but I know it's supposed to be an in-use existing easement.
And we can, we can talk about that more, because we'll be coming up another time, but we need to identify which exhibits were on for the record.
Yes.
Okay, this, this is the, I believe, the Cross Sabers, what it said at the top.
Yeah, I think it's Exhibit H.
Okay.
Is that what it is?
Okay. And another, another thing I wanted to point out while we're on this drawing is that, right here, if the, if the section, if the easement was put right here, you could put a football field through there, instead of having this busy, expensive intersection here, roadfront property, if it was granted down here, or maybe if they offered them $50,000 or $100,000 for a little piece of property right here. That would be very simple to do. This just shows some of the old, old tracks. This is one of their exhibits off of Rapid Map, I believe. I tried to pull from some of theirs and ours to avoid having to switch over to Google Maps. I think you put it on 155.
For the record, that's page 153 of the packet.
And I apologize, I didn't, I didn't know of reference like that. Is that 155? This is just showing access coming down and how the slope is gentle, and it's not, you know, near what it's been made out to be.
Sorry for the interruption. Again, this is page 155 of the packet.
I'm sorry.
We have to put everything on the record, so that way the record is clear. If this is transcribed later on, the judge is not going to be able to know what you're talking about when you point to this and then gesture, because there aren't going to be videos available to the judge.
I apologize. Can you put on 163 now?
And that's 163 of the packet?
Page 160.
Correct.
Okay.
It would also be Rains Exhibit 2.
Yeah, and this has already been covered. You guys covered, I think, that quite well about the radius of being a public or private road. Can you put on 164?
And page 164 of the packet.
Okay, this is our submission packet, 160, page 164 on the county's packet. This shows where our engineer has said that our detention pond is going to have to be for us to be able to use our land. So if you look down here, where they're talking about even putting a road up here, or down here, this is going to hurt us in what we do in having a private facility, but also going through our detention area. And we're, we're trying to figure out how to do this right now, because this is a wetland. This would have to be considered. This is all low area. It would have to come up quite a bit in elevation to the, to the Mickelson Trail.
So this is Rains Exhibit 3?
Correct.
Okay.
And we'll have more testimony on that from Mr. Zach Grapentine. He's from Interstate Engineering, and he's doing Ron Bings', his original report. He's testifying as to the contents of that.
I've never seen where you can walk from a piece of highway where somebody's saying you have an isolated track, and you can literally walk from the county road, across it, over and walk across some Mickelson Trail, walk onto your own property. It, to me, it just, it just doesn't seem reasonable. They have so many points of access, you know, and I think Ron has pointed out probably the best one, and one they've been using for a long time, and it would be very easy to build a private drive over it. But, you know, to say that they are an isolated track is just, I don't get it. They really don't have any studies, any this, any engineers. It's always have a denial of something, but they never show ways where they can do it. Most of it, I want to point out, has been speculation, in my opinion, what I've seen. I don't see any, you know, this is the first time I've seen anybody read the codified law, what it actually requires to, to be defined as an isolated track. And a lot of this has been covered. You know, they make it sound like it's a 300-foot sheer cliff, but with here, it's, couldn't be further from it. Couldn't be further. Mr. Henderson said we could walk over there and look at the zine place. I walked over myself and looked up it, and it's, the one there closest to the old zoo cage area would be very easy to put a road up there, and I think the contours would demonstrate that. And I want to point out, you know, this is, this is a lot for speculation. It's cost us, and the previous landowners, a great deal of money, a great deal of time and trouble. It's been a great deal of time and money, I know, to the county and things, all for what Mr. Quentin said in one of the last meetings would be one house. They haven't even established they can build one house because of a lot of the setbacks. The setback's because the unvacated section line on them, they can't build on that, they can't build on the wetlands. They don't have any studies to show they could build. They don't have any permissions. They don't have any offsets of the flood area somewhere else that they would allow the water to go to. They haven't even changed this residential. It's still agriculture. They're, they're enjoying the exemptions, the ag exempts on it. It doesn't, it just seems like there's nothing here to really be taken seriously. nothing here to really be taken seriously, in my opinion. The first thing I would do is see, viding it up, and could I build it? Would I be allowed to build it? I know they've had some flooding down in the Hill City area. Have they addressed that? So, we basically, you know, request on these grounds that you deny it, that you deny it. We don't see that it's in the best interest of them, of the public, of us. It just really in a lot of ways is unexplained. I know there's this lithium mine thing that came up. I didn't know if that has anything to do. I really don't know. I know, though, that this doesn't make sense. That's all I have.
Thanks, Darren. Cole, you have a couple more witnesses?
I do, and I just want to make a quick clarification. Darren Raines is a very knowledgeable person. If there's any representations made upon the legal effect of, say, the existing easement from Chem LLC that was granted over to the Cross Sabers that was identified today, that those legal representations might not be accurate. This is a private easement that was granted over. There is not a legal description, Exhibit A, so it's, we don't know exactly where that is, but we do know that there is an easement filed with Register of Deeds. I think it's pertinent to this discussion. It's pertinent to the determination of private versus public interest here. But I would like to make that clarification that some of those legal representations might not be accurate. That's all we'd like to say regarding that. I would like to ask, my engineer, most of his presentation has to do with the isolated track. That's the question here. You know, there really isn't anything to testify to regarding whether it's public or private interest here. So, I would encourage the commission, if they do want to hear from our engineer, please let me know. Otherwise, I will save that time to discuss the isolated track issue and leave these first two agenda items for your decision.
Thank you, and I appreciate that sometimes the direction of testimony goes by the people who are coming forward. So, we kind of crossed into a great deal of discussion on the isolated track part. So, I think that'll kind of bring, should limit probably the last item that's on our agenda. So, at this time, is there any questions from the commissioners? Is there, sorry, staff, is there any staff comments on this? I'll go to the commissioners, Mr. Laster.
If you don't mind, I'd like to ask the attorney, and maybe it's just an open-ended question to either attorney. Who's going to pay? If we establish that we're going to reinstate a right-of-way, a section line right-of-way, and there's a taking and all that, who's going to pay for it? Is the county paying? Is the applicant paying? Who's paying for it?
Yes, if the section line is reopened-
You might want to come to the mic.
Sorry, thank you. If the section line is reopened and relocated, that would be an expense of the county. If it is an isolated tract, that's a different story. Then the condemnation happens, and the applicant has to pay for that access at that point. That's the distinction between the two options.
Cole, do you have a comment?
I believe that. I agree with that.
Okay. Any further questions?
I may have a follow-up with Quentin, if you don't mind, only because it was something that the other side made mention, and I just want to address it, and so I can understand it in more detail. And it's about what Raines is, I believe he's, I don't remember who said it, but they said that whenever the original section line was vacated, there was no challenge to that. And I'd like to understand that, if the applicant believes that there was a loss of private property access at that point in time, why was that not challenged in court or anything of that nature, to make sure that he still had access to his property? So, I just want to address that since it was brought up.
Yes, there absolutely was a challenge. It was very contentious before this body in order to address that section line vacation. Vacation was done over the objection of the applicant. So, yes, there was, was, it wasn't something that they just said, "Don't go ahead and vacate it." It was over objection of the applicant.
But after it was vacated, what process? Did they appeal it? Did they go to court? I mean, or did he just accept it and then just move on until now where we're at, where he's asking for it to be reinstated?
They did not challenge it in court, but did then file the motion to reopen and relocate it in order to address that decision that was made. It was determined that the best course of action would be to file the necessary petitions and try to see that it was reopened rather than appeal it.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I think I heard, and I'll go around then to Dan.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we were the ones that vacated the section line. And the reason we did that is because we did reach out, tried to do our due diligence, and I think it was when we reached out to South Dakota DOT, and they indicated there could not be an approach of Highway 385 because of the site distance and other reasons, we felt that it was in the public's best interest to vacate, and so we went ahead and did that motion, so.
And that's why the petition that was to reopen it is also to relocate it, to address that issue of the approach.
Chairman, Mr. Romney, please. So, Mr. Romney, with Mr. Ditweiler on the property, Mr. Raines owns it now, right?
Correct.
So, between there, we were talking about the easement. Is it the easement that's on the north property of Mr. Raines that was Ditweiler's, between the saloon and Ditweiler or Raines' property at this point?
So, there is no easement given from the saloon owner, Chem LLC, to Dan Ditweiler, that I'm aware of.
Okay. But there was no easement granted at that time in any way, shape, or form from Ditweiler since we vacated the section line?
No, not that I'm aware of, from Dan Ditweiler to anyone. There's been no easement granted.
Been on this property, I don't know, at least six or eight times, some with people, some without people. But I believe when we were talking with Ditweiler, I could have swore he said he was given an easement on that, his north property, at some time, so they could have that access to that back property. Without even discussing the other side, we never went to the other side at that time until later because he said that, and that's what was my understanding, is it was a promise of an easement. At that time, maybe he sold the property or he did something. So legally, a promise maybe is not as good as a document, but that also dumbfounds me, too, if someone says that. And it's not something to me that's taken lightly, that, okay, we're vacating your section line, you can't get access. But he was saying there's access right here from this saloon, I keep wanting to call it salon, saloon here, that it would be an easy access because there used to be a zoo there. I was listening to all this conversation at that time, Mr. Raines. Unfortunately, you inherited the property. I guess his word, now that you own the property supposedly, is nothing. But for me, to tell something like a promise and saying that they would get access at that point, he didn't say, "Well, go down there and access over there." He said, "Maybe we could work something out with an easement."
Well, I spoke with Mr. Ditweiler today, and I've spoken with him about that quite a few times. He's actually listening right now, would take questions if you like.
Okay.
And he said that someone on the other side had said that, and et cetera, et cetera, but he said, "I would never do that."
Okay, well, I, there wasn't the other side. I can tell you that. I've been on here long enough, and people know me. That's not something I would say that the other side said if they didn't say it. It was Mr. Ditweiler visiting with all of us there at one time, and then saying, "Well, we could probably do an easement here since we vacated the section line. They're going to need another access."
There may have been a time where Mr. Ditweiler was just trying. He's had health issues, and this has been a very stressful thing for him. And to be quite honest, that's one of the reasons he sold the property. So, at some point with the health issues and everything, he was just trying to look for a way out.
Well, and that-
But there was never anything, you know, quit writing or anything, giving them any type of an easement or anything that was a workable agreement, that I, my understanding.
And I guess legally, I understood that, but I also made a decision for a vacation on a promise that I was listening to, that if they could have somewhere else to access for that, it would make my decision for vacating a section line in the future or forever, which is forever, my decision to say, "Okay, if you're going to give them an easement, it's a better access. It's a better access," as you listed to Mr. Von Brandt. Why I'm saying that is because it makes a huge difference for my decision-making if someone, if I vacate a public access to give a private easement. Your lawyer, Mr. Romney, sorry, said the private easement.
And I can't speak to that, but I can just say that we purchased it without a section line or without an easement. But I do believe Mr. Ditweiler is listening and willing to take questions, is what he would say.
Right. My bottom line is, I made a decision, my personal decision, to vacate a section line, thinking that we were given a private easement. You're correct, Mr. Romney, a private easement through that property. It was an easier access. Mr. Ditweiler agreed that it was an easier access to get it through there than to go through a section line, which I totally agreed with. But that's why I'm going to tell you up straight. That's what I heard. That's why I vacated it.
Yeah, I can't speak to that. I just know how we purchased the property without either.
I'm speaking to that. That's where my vote came from, to vacate the section line personally. So, I'll just tell you that. That's where I think the private easement came in, and it would have been a private easement, and it would have been access of 385 that made more sense to me than taking and listening to the DOT telling me, which I believe the DOT knows where the accesses should be, that it should be by the saloon.
At that time, the bar had no easement there. There was nothing. So, if he ran an easement at a highway, I don't think ESTO would have allowed it. So, I don't know how that would have worked.
Yeah, well, the landowner was there at the time as well, the other landowner that owned the saloon. So, to me, it looked like, it seemed like an easier access, and we're all looking like that was where the private easement needed to be. So, just my opinion, and I'll just tell you, that's why I voted to vacate the section line. Thank you.
Okay. Cole, do you have, did you want Mr. Whitley as a witness, and you want to wait till at the isolated track to bring him up?
I would defer our engineer to have an isolated track discussion. You know, he can speak to the proposed relocation. There's significant elevation changes, but I think you've heard testimony from the engineer for Cross Sabers, and explains there needs to be a retaining wall. There's some elevation variances and so on and so forth. So, I think you've got the picture of the road that would have to be built there.
Thank you, Cole. With that, I think we still got Chem to speak, and then we go back to a rebuttal for 15 minutes with Cross Sabers, so I'll call on-
He is very confused.
Okay, your mic's on. Is it off now? Okay.
All right. This is Dan Ditweiler. Are you looking for me?
No, Dan. They decided to wait for item number three for you to speak. Are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that, thank you.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you, sir, for your patience.
Good afternoon. So, my name is Howard, you know, better known as Howie. I own the Silver Dollar Saloon, which is Chem and Etho LLC. And I guess I probably have a little bit different angle on this, as I believe they call that a monkey in the middle. So, I'm going to give you kind of background on when this all kind of started, and when it came within my view, and my level of frustration right now, even after being here for two hours, that I have better things to do, is, as you imagine, quite high. So, initially, when this came about, a section line vacation, I had just met Mr. Ditweiler. So, he came in to the saloon and introduced himself at one point, whether the same day or different day happened. So, he mentioned to me that he'd like to build further closer to the hill, or it should be, but there's a section line down there. And I said, "Oh, I know." I said, "I've had this conversation with Ralph and Sandy Cruzy previously, because instead of going through survey or, God bless Rapid Map, getting a general idea." At one point, I talked to Cruzy, he's like, "Where is the section line at, just so I know?" So, as time allows, I decided to develop the rest of our property, however may do it, I have an idea. And we had a specific discussion, Ralph and I did many years ago, about where the section line is, and why the storage garage just magically stopped, and we would almost seem like an odd spot where they stopped building. Like, well, heck, I'd put another building further north. Why not? Well, there's a section line issue, and one of the things is, and we've discussed it with Hendersons in the past, is that there's a, is a section line in place here, and if we wanted to build further, we need to work out something, getting it vacated, which is complicated in this state. The idea being as if all the Henderson children wanted to carry a dinghy down the section line and throw it into the wetland and eat peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, they'd have the right to do that. That's the simplicity of section lines, in my mind, way back in my days when I was actually into real estate. So, I reiterated that exact conversation with Mr. Ditweiler, thus saying, "I would go speak with Hendersons before you get anything rolling. That way, you would have an idea and be on the same page, so that you don't end up in places like we are now so much time later, okay? And under, in everybody's timeline, including yourselves." That was the gist of that discussion. Now, later on, he came by again and explained that they were going, they were working on that, and they were looking for signatures. And I said, "I don't necessarily agree with eliminating section lines. I agree with moving them for best use of property, especially here. We're on an, you know, up there, we're on an island of trees, essentially. It could be water, it could be trees. There's a lot of unbuildable area, thanks to Forest Service and state land and so on and so forth." And so, I don't want to sign that particularly, unless I saw something that was of interest to me that would be going on. Okay, so, then it's in the legals, which I do not read, because I'm not that interested, but my wife does regularly with her law degree, and said that, "Oh, they're doing a meeting on vacating the section line." And I talked to John about that, and they were obviously against it. There hadn't been any communication, I don't believe, I don't know for sure, between Hendersons and Ditweilers on the matter. So, the next conversation I had with Ditweiler at some point, and with Henderson, was that, okay, obviously, this is getting vacated. I believe I was here at one meeting, I can't recall which, you know, just to see what was going on. I wanted to see the map myself. Does this affect me? Is this going to, is my gate going to close to my access, you know, and so on and so forth? Like, how does this affect us, essentially? Well, with that said, the next conversation was about an easement versus a section line. So, as long as they've got access to that parcel, which, based on what the law's saying, is it actually, you know, right now, we have ranchettes in the new zoning, which are half acre. I suppose you could build five houses on two and a half acres, right? Five times five, if you wanted to. There's a lot of variation. We're limited on land here. So, again, I would say, "Oh, an easement's a good idea." So, there was discussion at some point, and I don't have an email to prove that. I only have what I know for a fact, because I didn't put out a random unplatted easement for no reason. And I said, "Well, based on the mapping of the highway right-of-way, which would be at the south," oh, I'm terrible with these things, Lord help me, "our south access has decent sightline to the north, good sightline to the south, and the road right now that I can drive down from southbound onto the neighbor's property, well, when there's still cages there and a building that we burned down, back when I was still a firefighter, you could drive all the way around and back down to the bottom of my hill right there. You could do a whole lot. There's already a road there." So, the discussion was, was that that would become their access. And that's, I believe, what the two parties were discussing. So, I said, "Well, yeah, I will grant you an easement, but it's going to be unplatted until there's some sort of a solution in place." Because it's, okay, well, all of a sudden now, we're right up against my residential building. That's the south part of our facility there. Oh, wait a minute. Hey, well, you're too close to that. Now, we're, now I've encumbered myself with my own, with a stroke of my own pen, so to speak. So, as far as I knew, for quite an extended period of time, there was going to be some sort of easement access in there. And I thought, "Well, that would be great, because that would be something that essentially our customers could use, too, because if you head north, you know, and I think you've all been there enough to probably about have that property memorized, you go around the power meter, past the dumpster, past the propane tank, and you go down the hill, and it kind of loops around our hill, and there's a gate." Which we keep it mowed, you know, because a lot of our, you know, our pastor and other people like to ride their bikes and come in. But it's not exactly the best, you know, access for us to the trail. And I thought, well, that'd be great. I could get a part of that and even specifically give up a few feet of land if that's what it takes to make an access. That's on our south end that would go around and across the trail or onto the trail, for example, would be better than what we've got now. And either way, I'm not doing enough business off the trail. Joggers don't, generally speaking, drink a lot of beer. But either way, it could somehow be a benefit to me in the future and not an encumbrance. So that's exactly why that there is, and the date escapes me, of course, an easement filed that's not planted. Because more, you know, there are a lot of questions left there. Well, that fell apart at some point in negotiation and discussion. Now, as far as Mr. Detwiler goes, I've got, I've got to the point where I just didn't want to see him on my property because him or the, Dan, the realtor were there, this question, that question, this question, that question. You guys have done how many site visits? I think I missed you last time, I believe, because my kid was getting, had his driver's test. So that was, took precedence over the meeting. But I've seen that. And when I picked up on the legal documents that I need to pick up and all that, and basically, besides an easement on that south side, there's nothing else I want to do with this at all. I'm not going to grant any other easements. One map I saw at some point, Lord knows where, was basically going right along the north end of my building, past the dumpster, past the propane tank, down the hill and out to the trail. Like, well, why would I give up even a snippet of land? You know, our, our south entrance there, that, that corner between the state right of way and then the road that goes over onto the neighbor's property where there, you know, was a road, some sort of zoo access, that's completely unbuildable and useless to me. If I were to put something there, it would block that beautiful structure I have, you know? So there's nothing I can put there anyway. So it makes sense, you know, for all parties involved. And then that'd be also the case where I'd like, where I would go to DOT and as we worked with them previously to close our center entrance and put a turning lane in for obviously safety purposes. Maybe that entrance then, it could be widened, also say, hey, I'm granting this easement, there's going to be a, a private road. We'll say it'd be fifteen, twenty feet wide or twenty-four, whatever it might be. Can we widen this approach? So it's more usable. Because right now it's a little tight. If you, if you bring a food truck in, you try to get two Harleys out at the same time, it gets to be a little bit cumbersome. We learned that during rally every year. But we do have a turn lane, which we didn't have before. Everybody whipped it and out. And then as far as easement on the north side, I, I'm limited by that, that cliff up there and the north access. And that is a tricky access. Anyway, DOT actually went out of spec. Where, where that was originally just gravel coming off the highway, there's a massive drainage issue. So when they redid the highway, they put in a concrete approach and their angle, whatever that angle is supposed to be, I'm not sure. The engineer told me that had to change because it was so steep. So right now, after they filled it with gravel, it does this. So if you're in a camper or something like that, you're going to scrape coming out of there. So that would need to be built up higher. And that is better as a right-hand turn only exit. It's terrible for access coming in from the, coming from the north and making a left-hand turn. In fact, when my bartender was rear-ended right there, after I told her, don't use the north entrance, she used the turning lane. She was rear-ended on her way to work one day, in fact. And that's where we're looking at, where we're, it's northbound onto Henderson's property. There is a road, there's kind of a, I don't know if you recall, there's a wider kind of gate right there. Generally speaking, we put up T-posts and we flag it with beer flags to keep people from going that way. Because the side-by-side, people like to be creative sometimes. So we have to manage that. And that in and out is a poor access, even for us. It works great for right-hand turns if you're driving something that's high enough off the ground not to scrape. And that's about it. Anyway, regardless, my concern isn't why I sit here today is that, okay, something gets moved for access. Okay. Why does it have anything to do with my property at all? I have pretty big dreams and I'm for what I'm going to do with that eventually. And so hopefully I'll be here in front of you saying, hey, here's my great idea. So I, I just ask that. There is no encumbrances there. Last I knew, last I felt good about this was a few years ago when we were going to grant an easement and there'd be a road that ran along the southern border of our property that went across to Nicholson and they could carry their boat upon there and float in the, float in the water and eat peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, like I said, or whatever it might be. Another note here is that, and I'm not, this is not my kind of operation right here anymore, do eyesight and computer screens. But there's a couple of photos in there at one fifty-three and one fifty-five, those two pages, I believe. And both of those photos were, one of them was facing south. That was, that, that photo was of my property, not Henderson's property. So that, that, that is not part of the access. That's not part of Henderson's at all. The other one, there was a sign, I believe it says Nicholson Trail Adventures are Used To It, Snowy Out. That's my gate looking south right there. That's not actually on Henderson's property at all. That's actually our property right there. So. And that's all I really have for the record is that I would like to be, um, I'd like to be left out of this as much as possible so that I can go on about my business. And there was a lot of things said, and I believe in the case, I, I understand the point here with the new neighbors, coming into something and saying, okay, we're going to build this. But I believe there was active litigation at the time. Maybe they knew that, maybe they did not. I don't know, you know? And I think they should have the, be able to build as many buildings as they want, you know? But at the same time, that tract over there is essentially isolated from a logical, a logical standpoint, even for a driveway access. And I can take any, any parcel that you look at here, the, the amount of things that, I know Ron's seen it before too, where there's blasted through rock to build a giant house on, on one acre that somebody paid ninety-nine thousand dollars for. And I know it suggested to me to sell them some property, which I'm not really interested in doing at some point. You know, the value of land here has skyrocketed. So I believe that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Howie, I didn't catch your last name.
It's, it's Eunno. E-U-N-E-A-U.
You said it so fast, I, I missed. So, thanks, Howie.
Yes.
Just to have, have any questions of Howie? If not, is commissioners have any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr.
Howie, if we determine that it's isolated, which we haven't yet, and we did, we reopen the section line and relocated to option B, would your lot not be encumbered by a thirty-three foot section line right of way? That, that's the point. Thirty-three feet would be on the Reno Gulch and then thirty-three feet would be on the Silver Dollar property. Is, is my track on that right?
Well, I, I.
I mean, that sixty-six feet, is it all going to be on Reno Gulch if the section line was relocated? Or would that be fifty percent on your property and fifty percent on the storage facility?
Well, it wouldn't be able to be fifty percent of my property because that would encumber existing structures. Now, Detwiler did have a survey done, multiple surveys done, I believe. And based on where the pins that I see that they left, and I'm, I'm not going to dispute the accuracy of that necessarily, but our, our fence line, which we believe to be our property line prior and the stakes that are put in moves our property line north, quite a few feet, actually five to seven feet. So for any kind of a section line, it wouldn't be able to center on the property line because the center, that, that center would be literally like this, essentially flat. And then, so if the section line were to be reopened and moved, there, we only have so much space that allows that based on structures we already have. Either way, as, as that is the edge of the hill or the, you know, the edge of the cliff, as they say, I guess, if I have a better way to put that. We don't really have any buildable space to our south as it is right now. We don't. What's there, what's there is there. We can't really move anything any further over. And then our wellhead is about eight feet, eight to ten feet from the actual property line also. And then, looking at it two different ways, a sixty, a sixty-six foot road. We have a section line on the, on the, the southern border or the northern border of our house on Reno Gulch, which actually is part of the same section line, oddly enough. Our faces, our house faces due east of, of Rio Gold Storage on Reno Gulch. We have a section line between our neighbor's pasture, Lindstrom's, where the buffalo are and our property there. And we had the discussion on that one. So like, what would be the point of vacating that? There's a cabin that sits there, since we bought the property, that is probably dead on, just about two feet from the center of that section line, you know? Even though there's access, our driveway, there's access to the, you know, the field where the buffalo are and all that. But the point to vacate that is what? There isn't one right now. Who knows what my children would do because there's nothing really buildable behind that or on the other side of it. There's, it, it doesn't, doesn't lose or gain anything by its existence.
But the point that I was trying to make, if you relocate that section line and the entire section line is on the silver, or I mean, on the Reno Gulch storage, then you can't build within fifty-eight feet of a section line.
Of that.
Of the center. So I just wondered if that would impact the Silver Dollar. That was my.
And it, and it does in fact. But I guess what I was getting at, sorry, I took the long road around that point was, is that right now the section line that exists next to my own, my own home even, fifty-eight feet, I think I have a structure within fifty feet that's been there for forty years. So looking at that, bringing the section line back and moving it, that is more cumbersome to me because it, it starts, becomes an encumbrance versus, you know, line three is granting some sort of an easement to that property, which can bring us quite a bit closer, is the least damaging for everyone, I would assume.
But I still, I still fall back on option C. And that's coming off legal access off of Highway three eighty-five right on Henderson's property.
Going northbound.
Right.
Right. And that's an odd, that's an odd spot, if you recall. That is an odd spot. It's, we keep that flagged because it, it does look like there's a road. Well, there is a road essentially. We keep that flagged, especially during tour season, so people don't get lost. But that is quite steep going down there. We did have an accident down there where somebody tried to use the, not, not the highway itself, but they tried to use the actual embankment. They're on the wrong side of the guardrail. Some adventures on ATV that cut through there, which inspired my flagging of that because they decided they could probably go that way. That is rather, rather steep down and that is.
Well, this spring I went, did a site visit and I drove my truck down there in probably eight inches of snow.
Down, at, at the north entrance that goes to the pasture, then there's the kind of a gate there or whatever. So most of that falls into DOT's right of way.
Right. And then eventually Rich with South Dakota DOT met me and just wanted to verify
That you can.
That that could be an approach to the Henderson's property.
You can get down there. And the majority of that access road down there is on, in, within the DOT right of way. So that again begs the question with me, where, where it brings into my concern is that DOT says, well, maybe we make a four-lane highway out here. Hard to say. Well, then, or whatever, whatever structural reasons, that, that curve's not going to go into the mountain to the west at all. If that highway is widened and, and shoulders are built or whatever else, it's going to continue east, you know, moving east essentially, you know, within its right of way. Well, then we get to, as you get, well, as you know, you get, the further, as you're headed north there, the further east you go, the steeper that, that green gets.
I don't actually be in there. I think we're all kind of like deer in headlights, but
Okay, well.
Do the best that we can.
So Chairman, I got, I got something.
Are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, go ahead.
So when did we vacate the section line? What was that date?
October fifteenth of two thousand nineteen.
Twenty nineteen. So this easement, the K E M M, tell me your first name, sir.
Howard.
Howard.
Or Howie.
So October fifteenth, twenty nineteen, we vacate a section line. November eighteenth, twenty nineteen, you give a right-of-way access easement.
Yes.
That access easement says that whereas there presently exists a private drive coming off of a public road known as South Dakota Highway three eighty-five, said private driveway travels to property owner by Cross Sabers. It is intent of K E M to give Cross Sabers and their hires and assigns a private access easement so that a portion of Cross Sabers' property can be accessed. So there's an easement that already accesses this property already?
No, the easement was designed without being specifically platted because there's a discussion with the southern neighbor with Dan that there's already a driveway on the south end of our property that goes next door.
What I'm saying, Howard, once you give an easement on a property, you also say on here, should Sabers desire to further develop the roadway, they shall deliver a plan of improvement to K E M M or their hires or assigns for approval. Any future road improvements or placement must be approved by K E M M and their hires and assigns.
Yes.
When you give a easement, which I have got easements before, they're in perpetuity.
Yes.
Um, so you granted them in perpetuity forever and access, if I'm correct by reading this, through their property, through your property to their property.
Correct.
So this is going to, it's because we need to build now. So what I'm saying is that Hendersons decided now, okay, so they got this private easement. We vacated a section line in October. Now we have an access to their property. They are now isolated anymore because they have an easement to their property. Is it because we have to make a public access to the property? Am I missing something here? Instead of a private access because I'm, I'm not getting the dates. Plus, October fifteenth, we vacated. Then November eighteenth, he found a solution of, of finding a private easement, which I would have done anyway. So you got an access to your property. Now you're coming back. It sounds like a fight for two people to fight on because they either don't like each other or whether, so Ditweiler, he probably didn't do the access
Correct.
easement because you did.
No, he didn't do it at all. This was.
I know. He didn't because at that point, when he promised, you already did it by a month later.
There's no access to that property from my property right now.
Then what is the easement?
Just for that, well, if you look in the.
Am I missing where the easement is?
It's just for the approach, to use our approach, our southern, our, yeah, to use our approach. That's the right word. Thank you.
Okay, good to have you, bro.
It's only for the approach, not for a direct line anywhere else.
Not, not all the way through.
Whereas there permanently, presently exists a private drive coming off of a public road known as South Dakota Highway three. Said private drive travels to the property owned by Cross Sabers. It is intent of K E M to give Cross Sabers and their hires and assigns a private access easement. It doesn't say a private approach. It says easement so that the portions of Cross Sabers' property can be accessed.
As filed, as filed nonspecific, my entire intention with that is only so that they could use our approaches.
So the grant is to remain a private dedication for private use only and not open to public generally. So basically, am I missing the diagram or something? This isn't just, maybe I'm missing the boat. It's not for just an approach. It's for a private drive.
And Mr. Chair, I think I, I think I picked up on what you were saying because as I read it, it said, a private right-of-way access easement over and across the property. It doesn't just say in that
Approach.
approach. It says over and across.
Right. And so it's not planted. My entire intention is just for the approach. It's not for a road across the property by any means.
But can I tell you something? If I have this easement in my hand, you just gave me a private drive through your land.
Subject to approval, also in the verbiage.
Sir, you got this stamped on November eighteenth with a notary on a private. So when you read this, sir, you might have read it wrong, but it doesn't say a private approach. It says a private drive.
Mr. Chair, one other thing.
Um, so here's the issue. So what started this all is we are going to vacate a section line. I've been here for a while, listening to this.
Absolutely.
Okay, we're vacating, all of us have, section line sixty-six feet. So we gave sixty-six feet of public right-of-way to Mr. Ditweiler. Sixty-six feet of land, of public land. My intent was, okay, then if you're, I. My intent was, okay, then if you're, I believe if I'm going to do this, I'm giving you sixty-six feet. You can help with the easement or you can tell me that we're given an easement to get to Mr. Henderson's land to be fair. That was my intent. Um, at this point, we come up with an easement, which is a private drive. And that's what Ditweiler at that point said is that this is the best place if I put any place, um, when we discussed it. And it was more than once, so it wasn't something hearsay or I just heard. It was more than once of men out there. So the bottom line is there was an easement granted to get to Mr. Henderson's property right here. So why are we here today? Am I missing something, Mr. Riggins?
Okay.
Let, let me see if you can answer.
Question from Mr. Riggins, okay.
Just from a legal standpoint, uh, the last paragraph of the easement specifically says that should there ever be a plan to develop the roadway, it would require the consent of Mr. Enu, which he's testified here today. He would not give on the basis that we would try to go straight across his property. He gave this easement with the understanding that it would only be to utilize his approach. So I guess where I'm coming from with the legal standpoint is based on everybody's understanding of this particular document. If Mr. Enu and I were to fix it, we would be right back here in another month.
But Mr. Riggins, um, at this point, I'm listing as a legal document that you just gave. Mr. Enu didn't know he's giving an approach to Mr. Henderson. Unfortunately, should have got a lawyer to underha, have a better understanding of what he just did. He gave an easement of access to Mr. Henderson's property.
But it's not complete because it references an Exhibit A, which was never prepared because there was never an agreement. And so there is no Exhibit A to this particular easement that shows where that location is supposed to be because we never got there.
So what you meant, maybe I'm missing something here, Jay.
Yeah, yeah, please, please do.
I've had an issue with this easement from day one, and here's why. When you do an easement, you have to specifically state in clear language on the face of the easement exactly where the easement is. This document does not do that. Actually, it doesn't do it for a reason because it suggests that that thing that I'm saying right now will appear in a separate document called Exhibit A. Exhibit A was never created. It was never recorded. This easement is no good, in my opinion, period. Because it doesn't say on the face of it. It gives a legal description and it says there exists a private drive. Where? You don't know where when you read this easement. Then you read down, it says this easement, uh, a survey diagram marked as Exhibit A describes the location. Okay, now we're getting somewhere, but there was never an Exhibit A done.
Correct.
And so this exhibit, you can tear it up, in my opinion.
Well, who gave the exhibit and who wanted it not as an approach, but as a road with a document that said so, but did it the wrong way, was Mr. Henderson. And then with your understanding, which you should have read, was supposed to be an approach and not a legal road.
Ma'am, ma'am, it's still a road. It's still a road.
I know it is, but it's not an easement. So the whole thing for me is just like, it, it adds another piece to this, this convoluted thing going on here because again, we vacated a sixty-six foot right-of-way through private property, which we've done many times because you really can't, it's already built on, it already has all its issues and you can't really do anything. And DOT says three eighty-five is not an access point. You can't build it there. You can't make an approach there. Why would we not vacate it? Done this a hundred times, um, for that reason. Number two, then we're trying to find a, a legal way to do it. We come in, Mr. Henderson and Ms. Enu, um, whether they did the easement wrong or right, was supposed to be approached by your opinion and Mr. Henderson wrote it up as a kind of an easement for a road with no exhibit. There, there's your mistake there for an easement. Okay, never happened. Somebody signed it, someone note, someone took the time to do a notary on something that didn't make any sense. If this was my property, um, I'd be pretty, hold on, be pretty mad that it wasn't, wasn't an approach like I thought it was going to be. It's going to be a road. It never got no exhibit, which is fine. Then we come into, now we're going to an access. We're trying to find a access for an isolated track on Mr. Henderson at this point, when he worked with Mr. Ditweiler, which are, like I said, there's supposed to be a easement granted or whatever because, in my opinion, and was told sixty-six feet was going on a public right-of-way and was going to go to Mr. Ditweiler, so they were going to try to find a solution with that if we vacated it. That was my opinion, my opinion. Those things never happen. Now we have an isolated track supposedly on a road that I believe, my opinion, you can go down the right-of-way and do a driveway and do some stuff on that area. Maybe I'm giving all my cards away, but the whole thing is just to me, um, nonzit because you have a track that you can build a road on, on the other side of your road, not affecting you, not affecting anything except the cost of how much that road's going to cost, so.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Wow.
We're supposed to let him make his comments and then move on. Mr. Laster, I'll, I'll let you ask.
I just, I just have a question for clarity. I mean, I know, I know what we were talking about on this particular easement, but Jay may have to answer this. The easement is granting access for a private roadway. So opening up a section line right-of-way that actually is only designed for private dedication, that would be, seemed to me that it would be contradictory, wouldn't it? Since a, a section line right-of-way is supposed to be access for the public, if this access is only granting for private dedication, it seems like those two pieces coming together at that moment would probably be, um, counterintuitive.
Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office.
Jay, we can't hear you.
Right-of-way access.
We can't hear you.
Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office, uh, if this right-of-way access easement was truly a legal easement granting just an approach, then that's a private approach. And if you relocated a section line to the edge of that and then only private people, a private person could access that section line, that's counterintuitive. That's illogical. Because the section line is for public use, not for one private person to get to it and then use it.
Gotcha.
But the problem that we've been talking about here today is, I think this was a concept in the making and it got recorded.
Yes, sir.
But it was, it was never, it was never completed. The, this easement document was never completed to make it a valid easement granting, I would suggest even granting the private approach because it doesn't really say that in here. And certainly it doesn't grant an easement from Highway three eighty-five all the way across over to the Mickelson Trail. It doesn't do that. It purported that it wanted to do that by creation of what's referred to in here as Exhibit A, but Exhibit A never got drafted. It never got stapled to this document and recorded with registered deeds.
But Jay, you can't put a private approach on three eighty-five and he couldn't have granted a private approach on three eighty-five anyway. He didn't have the reality to do that.
No, he can, he can grant an easement on his own property.
Right, but not a private approach.
Man.
Well, he'd have to get permission from DOT.
That's why I'm saying, that's why I said it didn't make sense that that document was going to be a private approach because that had nothing of legality as in that. It was something from cross Sabres that thought he was going to get a private easement across the road through it, but didn't finish it with Exhibit A.
Yeah, I think what the intent was, what the intent was, is that anybody can come off of the highway and pull into the parking.
Yes.
He wanted, he wanted to grant, um.
Section of road to connect to what Ditweiler had spoke of giving to Henderson's for access.
Right.
Right.
So I'd be giving up, maybe be a thirty-foot road from, from, the use of the approach is for, for everyone, but from the approach to connecting with what Ditweiler was supposedly going to allow to replace the lack of section line access was the whole point of the document. And if that would have happened as planned, part of my personal frustration, as I imagine, was that document's created and now within a month, we're going to have a surveyor out here and I can say, that will work for me. I, I will give up an easement off the corner of my property so that I, it goes from DOT's edge, our approach, it connects to Ditweiler's property to give Henderson's access. That was the point of the document. But when that, when Ditweiler just didn't do it, just said, no, I'm not doing that. I'm not dealing with them. Then that became pretty much null and void and is now more or less useless as it was never able to be completed.
Without using some of his land? Ditweiler's land.
Well, that, that's how it started was he was going to grant an easement. So I was just connecting, connecting the dots, connecting, I was connecting the highway to him as best I could by giving up a corner. At that, that, at the time, it made a lot of sense, you know, it, it had made sense.
But, but as we stand here today, this, this, this piece of paper does not give access.
Just extra paper.
Okay. Travis, did you have a follow-up?
Not today.
Okay. Howie, do you have any following comments before we move, move on to, uh, we're going to do the rebuttal time?
Don't believe I do. I just hope that this is resolved rather quickly because I'm tired of it.
Thanks, thanks, Howie.
Thank you guys. Thank you all for your time and thanks for listening.
Mr. Riggins, this is your fifty minutes to rebut anything you've heard.
He can use whatever time he wants.
All, however much time, but this is your time for rebuttal.
Still within seventy-five minutes.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to spend much additional time on this issue because we're dealing with specifically the issue of reopening the section line and then subsequently, depending on your vote, whether to move it. Uh, specifically though, uh, you know, I had some conversation with Commissioner Lassiter earlier specifically about what the public benefit is to this particular, uh, reopening and relocating. I just want to point out that, uh, Mr. Enu pointed out that this would grant the public an access point for access to the Mickelson Trail that doesn't exist, which I believe is a public benefit and does benefit, uh, a number of persons as part of the general public. It also, Mr. Enu mentioned, if located properly, would provide some benefit to him while he said he doesn't have a lot of beer drinkers off the Mickelson Trail. He did also mention that this does have some positive impact on him as well. So it, it isn't quite just isolated to the Henderson's, the way that I may have answered Mr. or Commissioner Lassiter's question.
Thank you. At this time, is there anybody from the public for public comment that have any? Are, we had staff that would like to make one comment?
Joe Miller again, Pang County Highway Department. I just want to make abundantly clear, um, and Rich, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, Henderson did actually already have access to this piece of property without any sort of easement from Kim.
Could you please, what are we looking at? What exhibit?
We, sorry, uh, Rain's Exhibit number three, uh, looking at the, would be the northwest corner of Kim LLC's property where it abuts, uh, Henderson's property there, the intersection of three eighty-five where Kim's north approach is.
Can you use the pointer also?
Nope, that's, uh, trying to here.
Okay.
Doesn't show up real well with, uh, I don't know if we have.
Okay.
I can do this probably.
There you go.
Talking about right here, um, with three eighty-five being presumably probably a hundred and twenty-foot right-of-way, correct, Rich? Give or take, um, the exact right-of-way, Rich would probably have to go back and, and do a little bit of research on. Um, you know, if we go back to, and I'll pull up, uh, we'll just look at a Google Earth image here, maybe. I don't know, maybe. See if we can get here. The silver dollar here, um, so if we pull our guy over to the road, road view. Here's silver dollar. Here's the north approach. Um, Rich, if you don't mind coming up. Here at the roadway, um, you know, if you measure off here from center of road to the white lines, twelve, thirteen feet, correct?
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet plus six foot of shoulder. So we're, there we're at eighteen feet, correct? And we've got a hundred and twenty feet of right-of-way total. Split that in half, we have sixty feet of right-of-way. So roughly we have forty feet from, I would say maybe this curb line, correct?
Correct.
Um, going this direction, which is still public right-of-way. Um, so more than enough, you know, if you got a, a fifth wheel or a tra, horse trailer, uh, whatever might be, uh, the use of that property, say somebody's got horses, chickens, whatever. Um, they would have more than enough room to get off of US Highway three eighty-five sixteen, um, and get on to a private access easement to access that piece of property, correct?
Correct. This was actually designed and built with the highway. Like I stated earlier, in nineteen eighty-one, eighty-two, this is part of the design plans for shared access and access to at that point was Henderson's property. It's part of the design.
Mr. Chair. Joe, can you take your arrow and show where the isolated, or the one that we're, the subject parcel is?
It would be, so here, I don't, here's the fence line. The Kim LLC goes kind of right down through this area. And again, we're looking at a, a Google map view. Um, street view is essentially, so you can see this, the, the fence line that runs down here. Everybody was, that was out there numerous times. Um, so about this bridge to about this sightline is where we are talking about locating that private access to cross the Mickelson at, at that ninety degrees. Um, so just, uh, was asked to make that abundantly clear that, um, there is no access easement needed for Henderson's to access their property at this approach.
Okay. You done, Ron? Any further questions from the commission? So that ends our first part of this, of of the discussions on the reopen section line right-of-way. At this time, I, does the board commissioners have any more questions or comments to the presentations on this?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, I was asking, I was talking to the commissioners first. None. I would do, I'll go to public comment and I do have a speech request form from Dan Ditweiler. And I know, Dan, you're going to be speaking probably on the next, or, uh, the isolated track, but we'll limit your discussion to three minutes, sir.
Okay, well, I've got a prepared comments that will take about three minutes. I wanted to address Deb Hancock's concerns about what she believes I said, and that's going to cut into this for a moment. Um, she is misremembering the sequence of events. There was a hearing in September twenty nineteen, a site visit that I was not notified of and didn't attend. And then the final decision to vacate the session line happened October twenty twenty. Well after the fact, a year later, Deb Hancock said to me, you got something, give something. And she tried to persuade me to give John Henderson something. What she didn't realize is John Henderson wasn't willing to take any less than sixty-five feet. And sixty-five feet uses up the entire slope where I needed to fill dirt and I intended to build buildings as demonstrated by the site development plans I submitted to the planning department a long time ago. I'm going to go, oh, and as far as Howie's comments go, they're probably not worth me commenting about. Um, when I saw the easement, by the way, um, and I asked Howie about it, Howie told me that John Henderson said that, uh, I was going to grant him an easement if he could get an, um, access off the road. That was never the case and it was never the case because for one thing, we didn't have the land to give up. We had plans for all that land and John would not accept anything at the property line and it had to be a minimum sixty-five feet wide. Let me get into my prepared comments. Chairman McCroy and, uh, fellow commissioners, I'm Dan Ditweiler. My wife and I were the former owners of Reno Gulch Storage. Uh, this should have taken less than three minutes. I'm happy to answer any questions you have at the end. This petition is not in the public interest and there is no isolated tract. I petitioned to vacate the section line in twenty nineteen. After two public hearings and a site visit, the board voted unanimously to vacate the section line. This was the right decision then. Nothing has changed. Enormous effort and expense have gone into this matter. It would be wrong to reverse or modify that decision now. I am a subject matter in this, uh, subject expert in this matter. I'm happy to disclose my resume and work background anytime you want to hear those details and why I say that. During my past work history, I was responsible for building mountaintop radio communication towers across the United States and Canada. I have, without exaggeration, built roads to mountaintops in hundreds of locations. I did this work for Nextel, Verizon, Sprint, T-Mobile, and Rogers Cantel across Canada. The current matter isn't about a road, this is about a private driveway. They are different, standards are completely different. The ASHTO standards I keep seeing showing up in the long branch drawings do not apply to this private driveway. This is not about building a road designed for mining equipment and large trucks hauling lithium at a hall, uh, lit hill city. Building this driveway is a very simple task. Contrary to long branch engineering documents, there are no road building standards that apply to this private driveway in Pennington County, and I'm sure the planning department can, uh, establish that. There is no isolated tract of land. Please ask yourself what the definition is, I'm gonna skip through that.
Okay, Mr. Detweiler, your time's up. But you do have time to speak. They have you as a witness on, on, uh, the third item.
Yes.
So, okay, thank you. With that, that ends the public comment period. I would go to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to deny a resolution to reopen section line right of way, RS 22 dash 01, Cross Sabers LLP.
Second.
As the public interest will not be better served by reopening the section line, because it was originally determined in an appropriate manner before this commission that the section line was not directly accessible as per South Dakota Department of Transportation, as they would not grant a new approach to directly access the section line.
And I would second.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Lassiter. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
I just want to reiterate, and, and I think I made it clear earlier, but I'm not compelled that opening this up is a interest to the public since it is accessing private, uh, land, uh, based on state statute, state law, and the way it's situated and after that last, um, presentation that there is access via the highway there showing that they have that access easement, uh, I'm pretty compelled that, uh, there's not a need for it and that, um, it's not in the public's interest to reopen a public access right of way.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none? Is there any further comments from the audience? If none, I'll look for, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, this brings us to item seven, which is the relocation of a section line right of way, RS 2202, Cross Sabers LLP. Uh, at this point, I don't see with the denial, uh, moving forward with this, I'd look for a motion on that one. The item eight.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Just a question, uh, since we, uh, uh, didn't approve the item six, uh, can we not just move directly to item eight without anything on?
I would think we, we'd need a motion to deny resolution relocation of section line right of way, RS 222 dash O2, Cross Sabers LLP, as there is no section line to relocate.
And that's item seven on the agenda? Yeah, since it's on the agenda, uh, to be, uh, dealt with, you should deal with it. But as I mentioned earlier, um, you've now made a decision to not grant the reopening, so it really doesn't leave you with a section line to move anywhere, so it's kind of a moot point. So I think you should entertain a motion to dismiss or deny that relocation.
So that'd be your note?
I think there is a motion to.
Second.
Motion from Drews and a second from Lester. Any public comment? Any further comment from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Right? Opposed? Motion carries. Now, before we move on to item H, which is to determine where the property is isolated or, uh, isolate as defined by statute, I would recommend we take about a 10 minute break for, for them to.
Move to take a 10 minute break.
Second.
Moved by Ross, next second by Lester, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, welcome everybody, we'll come back into session from break. Uh, as we started out earlier, we will go into, uh, comment. Hold on just a second. We're gonna take up item eight, which is application to establish a right of way to an isolated tract pursuant to SDCL 31 dash 22 dash one, Cross Sabers LLP. And this was continued from our meet, our regular commission meeting from 8:16 of 22 Board of Commissioners meeting. So we'll run this the same as we ran the other one. Uh, we'll have Cross Sabers come up and already be able to use, we'll announce the remainder of the time that you do have, but we're, we are gonna stick to the application of the right of way and isolated track. Uh, and then we'll have Reno Gold again, and then How, Howie will come back up and then we'll have another, uh, Cross Sabers can rebuttal before it becomes, comes to the commission. So with that, Mr. Riggins, I, I'll let you begin. And Howie will let you, how much time you have left?
The applicant has 41 minutes and 36 seconds.
Thank you.
Mr. Riggins.
The isolated track petition comes before the commission pursuant to a petition that the applicant filed on August 11th, 2021. That's part of the current record. Uh, that petition was brought pursuant to SDCL 31 22 1. And I do want to read that statute in its entirety for the record. That statute states every owner of an isolated tract of land containing at least 10 acres not touched by passable public highway or smaller tract of land containing at least five acres used or intended to be used in good faith in whole or in part for residential purposes is entitled to an easement or right of way across adjacent lands to reach a public highway, which easement or right of way may be secured as provided in this chapter. An isolated tract is further defined as an area which is either inaccessible by motor vehicle because of natural barriers from all other land owned by the owner of the isolated tract, or is such an area which is not touched by passable public highway, which is in use or reasonably usable for motor vehicles. A tract of land adjoining a section line right of way for at least 60 feet, or 66 feet, excuse me, is not an isolated tract if a passable road can be built within the adjoining section line to connect to a passable public highway. So the reason I, I read that statute is because that's part of what we were doing earlier was to say that we were trying to reopen a section line, which would then make this particular tract not qualify as an isolated tract. Now that we've moved past that, the question is whether it meets those criteria. So I want to point the commissioners to the original petition, which was filed, uh, as I mentioned, on August 11th of 21. That petition in paragraph one states that the isolated tract in question consists of 7.92 acres more or less. So what we're dealing with is a tract of land which meets that criteria. As we mentioned, we've had numerous discussions relative to development for residential purposes, and as such, if a good faith showing is made that that's one of the rationale for this isolated track petition, it could potentially qualify as an isolated tract if it meets the other criteria. Those criteria include whether it is isolated from other property owned by the same owner due to natural barriers, which is what we're alleging here. We've had a lot of discussion about option C. That's the option that comes off of the northernmost portion of Mr. Howie's property, Kim LLC's property, and then that pathway which was engineered by, uh, Mr. Rain's predecessor engineer. We've only heard from one engineer. We've heard from a lot of people who've offered their opinions without hearing from any engineers except for Mr. McNaboe. Now, what I want to do is I want to turn this over to him because the concern that we have with this particular design, which makes it unviable or not a possibility for use by Cross Sabers, is going to be some engineering issues that have not been fully developed by Mr. McNaboe. So I'm gonna let him address those issues.
Yeah, thanks once again. It's Caleb McNaboe, Long Branch Civil Engineer. Yeah, I'd like to, uh, bring up previous exhibit, I believe it's already up on. Let's see. Let me just scroll through it, make sure we got the right one. This would be Cross Sabers Exhibit Four. This is the overall cross sections. I alluded to this at the beginning of my presentation where I discussed about, you know, all the cross sections that were evaluated. Um, hey, you know, as long as we're talking about, uh, you can drive up the cliff face, I think, look at the dash line there. I mean, that is, well, each one of these is 10 feet, it's 10, 20, 30, 40, that's almost 50 feet in 20 feet. So it looks steep. Anyway, if we take a look at, we take a look at the crossing location, which was most referenced. The DOT in our conversation has indicated that this existing ramp, which is located in the DOT right of way, would be accessible. Our analysis showed that, in fact, it doesn't meet the ASHTO, but I, you know, I just want to point out that it does meet the ASHTO for site distance.
Kevin, not to interrupt Mr. Se, Mr. Se, Mr. McNaboe, but if you bring up that map that, and that picture that Joe showed and show us where you're accessing and stuff, I think that would be more helpful than just showing us the map that you're showing today, Caleb?
Which one you talking about?
The one that he brought and he showed going down the hill. Remember the one you had, Joe, that showed the picture? It's worth a thousand words on what you're talking about, Caleb.
Sure. I, I don't know that it's all that germane to the conversation, but yeah, let's, let's go ahead and.
It's helpful for us to see basically what you're saying by.
Yep, so we're back on Google Earth. Here is the approach that we were talking about. That's the one I show on the map. Right here is the area that we're saying we could drive down to the DOT right of way to get into this flat spot. Here's the guardrail, I was saying creates a site distance problem. And when I alluded to, you were gonna sit your car right in that location with your eye three and a half foot above the road elevation, and then you'd be looking this direction at that car right there coming 50 miles an hour, three and a half foot, you're not looking through that guardrail. That's what the point I was trying to make in the, in the, um, the site distance ASHTO calculation. But what I really wanted to address in this.
If I may, Caleb, did you actually, uh, do a physical measurement of the, uh, site distance, boots on the ground, um, out there? Or was it a simulation that you, uh, did on your?
Yeah, yeah, let's touch on that. So this is the LiDAR. Obviously, we've got the LiDAR data for the entire state, state fluid. So that's LiDAR data. It's hitting two tenths vertical. Horizontal on the LiDAR is not as good, but the vertical on the LiDAR is excellent. So did I go out and send a survey or down the middle of there? No. I took the LiDAR, spookily available data. Got LiDAR for, well, even the state fluid. So that's what I did. So if we want to get back to this access, I'm more interested in this corner that we discussed. And let's go ahead and zoom in on it just a little bit. I don't know, see if I can figure out how to zoom in this thing.
Joe, you wanna show them how to zoom?
Yeah. Yeah, you got it, Frank? Where's the?
Joe, you wanna show them how to do that?
I just foxed it, no, it's a dummy.
You have to go back to Google Earth.
I'm gonna zoom it, oh, there we go. There we are. Let me hit the plus button. Okay, let me grab this guy. Okay. Oh, shoot. So we're most interested in this crossing on the creek, right here. I'd like to talk to you about the distance from this red line, which is the edge of the Mickelson right of way. It's shown on both sides. It's light, but it's shown, it's gonna be Cross Sabers Exhibit Three, Figure Three. The red line represents Mickelson right of way. I think we already established that we were gonna try to cross the Mickelson at a 90 degree angle. So the layout I have is at a 90 degree to Mickelson here, goes all the way across that 90. So let's just look at this point, which is the edge of the road, whatever width we want to call it, down to the edge of the creek. And let's assume that, you know, we said that we could put a driveway through there, no problem. That is 40 feet. When I go to exhibit, Cross Sabers Exhibit Four, we get down to Station 17 plus 50. I mean, I did a tremendous amount of evaluation to get here, and you could go down to cross section 17 plus 50, which I believe is, that's 13. There's 1750 right there. This shows the Mickelson Trail. It also shows the creek. It shows the edge of the Mickelson right of way. So we're gonna cross the Mickelson right there. And that's the creek. There's your 40 feet. That's 12 foot of elevation difference. So the Mickelson's 12 feet higher than the creek. You're gonna bring your road across. If I got 12, if I have 12 foot elevation, then three to one, 31 slope, so if I want to get up 12 feet, that's 12, 24, 36 feet. I need 36 feet to build that fill slope without filling in the creek. And I got 40 to work with. So that just left a, well, 36 minus 40, four foot driving surface. You can't tell me you can build that without filling in the creek. Uh, there's, there's not enough room to come across the right of way at a 90 and make that corner on fill slope. I mean, could you? I don't know. How do you not fill in the, the creek? I think we can agree that there's gotta be a minimum width for driveways. I don't think it's four feet. This is not a viable crossing at a 90. The location's no good. The fill slope's bad. If you were to cross and drive down the Mickelson right of way, which I believe they've already alluded to, the fact they don't want you driving down Mickelson right of way. I believe that we received testimony to that fact. If you're gonna leave there right of way at a 90 and get turned, we need more than 40 foot. We're gonna be in the, in the creek. If we can go back down to what are the other issues that I guess, and maybe Pennington County, uh, planning can help me with this one, is they had the floodplain map up earlier? Okay, I think I already nailed it. I would like to look at the floodplain map, because as it was pointed out, if the access was in this location, it ends in the floodplain, in the hydraulic floodway. You can tell the map is wrong because the creek is right there, right? From this point on, the hydraulic floodway follows the creek. Right, that's the, that's the semi line of the creek. Hydraulic floodway is shown up here. Development of this property is gonna require remapping. You know, and that's pretty typical. You end up taking the, you know, the LiDAR style cross sections. We do a HACRAAS analysis, establish where the hydraulic floodway actually is, the floodplain. Now, that, that, you know, obviously, there's an issue that's going to resolve depending on county planning with regards to crossing this location. But it's pretty clear to me that the map's wrong. I mean, I don't know how you have a hydraulic floodway that doesn't follow the creek. So I feel like I've done a lot of extensive evaluation to look at coming down this hill slope behind the Cross Sabers property. I mean, it's steep. You can see it there, this rock outcropping. I looked at the best location and it still results in a lot of grading. And you can say, well, let's not build the road per the county ordinance. Let's, it's a roadway. Let's build it at 15% grade. If we select 15, which if we were in Rapid City, the fire department would say 15% is max grade on a driveway because, you know, it's a tough to get apparatus up something steeper than that. The difference between 12 and 15% and 100 feet is three feet. So we're not talking huge apples to oranges. I ran the cross sections at 12%. If you want to change them to 15% max grade, you're going to shorten it up a little bit. It's not significant. You know, if ultimately you say, what's a reasonable grade? I mean, I would doubt that the county's out approving streets that are more than 15%. That would, that would seem unlikely. You know, in lieu of that, I guess the most, the thing I can leave you with is I just don't believe that this crossing, a 90 degree crossing on the Mickelson in that location's applicable. I just don't see how you're going to pull it off and not fill in the creek. I mean, I've got the numbers that represent it. It's, it's 12 feet. And again, it's, I'm using the LiDAR data, but that's how you, I mean, that's how we got all these contours. The contour is down the middle of the road. It's, it's typical that you'd use the LiDAR. And we've done survey work out here and the LiDAR, like I say, is hitting about two tenths vertical, which for this is reasonable.
Yes, sir. Ask questions or?
We're, we're trying to get through the presentation and then.
Making sure that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I really have nothing else to listen.
Thus far, most of the discussion has been relative to this particular drawing, Exhibit C. I do want you just to briefly hit on what you did earlier, though, about any other points of access other than that that we haven't addressed, other than A and B. You know, is there anywhere else on the Cross Sabers property that you can access the seven acre parcel from without cutting down the side of that cliffside?
Well, really, I, I believe I touched on that earlier. There is the option that we explored of coming off of their, the driveway access from their mother's property across the single lane bridge through the pinch point. And when I, it's, it's not as if I just winged it. I ran a plan profile down this entire road and ran a grading template on it. So I, I know that you can offer testimony that says, well, I've looked at it. I think I can make it. Well, I took into account where the right away lines were for the Mickelson trail to not grade into the right away and where the forest service boundary line is. I feel like I gave it quite a bit of thought. And then I did, like I say, a plan profile for the length of that road and ran cross sections down the length of that road to determine what these grading limits would look like. It's, this is not a viable solution. I don't know how you get through there without, you know, short of doing vertical, vertical cliffs. This alignment is not a viable solution. You know, this alignment that's on the north end of their properties, you know, south of them. This facility, again, it crosses a 90, doesn't require the FEMA, you know, involvement, doesn't require the, the culvert. But it's still also, you know, encovers the Silver Dollar property and is like the least, it's the number two option. So if you were going to rank them, you know, I think you're talking about, obviously, this access on the south side of the storage units is the best one. The FEMA, or the issue with the floodplain, it's going to have to get resolved because it's not on the creek, but we'll have to solve that problem. This is the best location. Number two is going to be, number two is going to be, you know, on the south side of the, not on the Silver Dollar property, but on the north side of the storage unit property. Then, you know, obviously, this enormous cut down the rock face is the very last option. And the other ones are really no better. You know, the, yeah, there's just, there's basically options hand being, A is good, B is dicey, but you could probably make it happen. C, the crossing at the 90 on the Mickelson, that's no bueno. The going down paralleling the Mickelson off the mother's place, that's a terrible option. And then coming down the cliff faces. I mean, everything's buildable. You can send a row of the Mars. You can, you know, obviously, blast away Mount Rushmore or equivalent of rock. But there's just no logical plan that involves coming down this face of this rock outcropping that I can see.
Thanks, Cale. Mr. Higgins, do you have any more?
No.
So at this time, I'd, does staff have any comments or questions? Like we have Joe?
I'd, I'd like to first address the, the site distance issue. Rich, would you mind coming up? Cale, where was that diagram?
No, that's, you're going to be on Cross Sabers Exhibit Three.
Which one is this?
Can you scroll down on that one? Yep, keep going. Almost all the way down to the bottom. There you go. Right there.
There we go.
So this is Exhibit Three Cross Sabers?
Exhibit Three Cross Sabers.
Uh, yeah, page 10 regarding the site distance.
So Rich is a DOT. I don't question Cale's use of the, the three and a half and a two foot object. But if you look at where he placed his vehicle, that does force him to look over the top of the guard rail. But typically, what you would do or the way we do it is you will, you'll measure seven feet from the white line and that's where you would place your three and a half foot eye height. So to see your two foot object. And in this case, he's at least seven feet behind the back of the approach, which would force you to look over the guard rail. So I think vertically, though, like I said earlier, I didn't, I haven't looked at this. But you shouldn't have to look over the guard rail in this case.
The other couple of things I, I wanted to bring up. So Cale mentioned grade limits. I don't know what Jerome Harvey or Fire Administrators rule of thumb for vertical grades. You know, you look at ordinance 14, mountainous, you can go up to 17%. You know, I'm not going to question Cale, but has it really been looked at to put a driveway in there? And what, what has been looked at? I know he kind of did it on the fly here, but has it truly been looked at to put a driveway in there with not meeting the ordinance 14 grading limits? You know, there's much significant or lesser need when you're putting just an access easement there. You know, I would, I guess I would pose the question, you know, has that been actually looked at? And hopefully, Raines' engineer has looked at that. So, and I think he has.
Thank you, Joe.
Chairman.
Miss Heck.
So Joe, so I understood the site distance because I also knew, Caleb, without sounding rude, that you have to back away from that guard rail. And you were right, because the access easement, that, that approach is usually pretty wide, where you're not going to have to be right next to, and you shouldn't be legally approach that close to a guard rail. So I kind of knew that just from working with Joe on some stuff and literally being on here long enough to know that. So the other thing is, not so worried about that, is the floodway and the access that Cale is talking about because you can get in there, and he's saying probably we can get in there on the flat land, but how do we cross without hitting that 100 foot right away from the Mickelson trail and being able to even build a driveway off that kind of, I mean, are you going to come off Mickelson, Joe, and come straight down into a driveway? How, how do we, and, and that's where I'm hung up at. I, floodways and all that other stuff, been in that kind of situation for a long time. You're not going to build a road next to a floodway or the floodplain. Of course, you can build it up. But how far, and, and Cale's telling you it's four feet, or he's telling you 12 feet basically to build on. That's my hang up. So we can build it all the way till we get to the Mickelson, but what happens? And that's been my hang up the whole way is the floodway in there. And maybe, okay, we have another engineer coming up here. Sean can answer that. Once you cross that, how do you get?
I guess I, Sean Smith, Pennington County Highway Department, just clarification. I have an engineering degree. I'm not a civil engineer. I don't claim to be one. I don't have the stamp that Cale has. So just clarify that. I just have a question for Cale. As you were up here on the fly looking at your cross sections, you're basing your cross sections on your grading for a center line from a 24 foot road. Did you push that south to see how far you actually are from the creek? Because you're giving profile from the center line of a 24 foot road. What does it do when you push it south? What's your distance against off your cross sections?
Yeah, I'd love to. Just comment on that. If we can, can we go back and look at?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my question. Because you're, you're showing a profile at the center line of a 24 foot road with your grading limits graded at. What is it as you push south?
Yeah, let's, let's get into that.
Thank you guys for discussing this because this was my issue with, I, I understood the access once you got in there, but it was the Mickelson and crossing by the creek and the floodways. So.
So now that we've blown it up on it again, I guess my point that I was trying to make, maybe I didn't explain it well, was we got to cross whatever, regardless of the width of this road.
Right.
We got to cross at a 90. So we know we're not turning until we hit that point or, or we're driving through the Mickelson right away. So if we're not going to turn until we hit that point.
So can you turn? Question. Do you have to go straight 90 or can you turn so you come off the 100 foot so it's not straightforward?
That was going to be my question for Mr. Shannon Percy. So does the, do they have to remain at a 90 within the right of way? Or just simply at the, at the trail itself?
I would prefer that it is at the right of way, as drawn, as shown. Because otherwise vehicles, they can just cut, it'd turn into a skewed crossing. It doesn't.
So it has to be a 90 and it has to be straight in that, that 100 foot right of way?
Correct.
Okay. So, because that was my question too. What if you did kind of like what it was doing is kind of turn it some? And that way you actually would be off, but then you mess with the right of way of the, you guys don't give variances or any, like what we call them?
Well, we could run it up the chain, but I mean, that, in my mind, that just becomes a skewed, you know, how far out then is it? I mean, you can draw that angle wherever you want, but it's still a skewed crossing.
So at that point, then it tells me that no matter if I'm correct, Joe and Sean, that him trying to get a road, how big a road are you going to, a driveway are going to get in that area? And unless he buys more land and goes further down or something on there in order to get that. But then again, that's taking, trying to get land from somebody else. Does that still work?
The other thing I, you know, and I pointed this out earlier and Sean actually helped me with this. You know, Cale used a 100 foot radius here on this drawing. Is that correct, Cale?
Yeah, I don't recall what the, I don't recall what the.
That was the, the ordinance prior to July of last year was a 100 foot radius. It can now be a 40 foot radius. So that radius outside of the, the,
100 foot.
The 100 foot right of way of the, the trail there can be a lot tighter. The other thing that comes to mind, you know, retaining wall. Has that been considered? You know, I don't, that's planning and zoning with building in the floodway with a narrower road. So that way you don't spill into the creek and have to have that box culvert or whatever you might have to have in the culvert. There's, there's some other options that haven't been discussed also.
Cale, explain some of that or Sean. What Joe's saying.
I, I guess maybe that is the, the point I was trying to make earlier. So regardless of the radius of this bend, let's, let's pretend like there isn't a bend, like it comes into an absolute 90.
Right.
We're not following any ordinances. We're just totally cowboy in this thing. We're going to come into a 90. If you look at that point where we crossed the Mickelson at a 90, and you look at that elevation on the creek, that's 12 feet. And that's where I'm saying, if we just came in a 90 that, I'm going to go up 12 feet at a three to one, that's 36 feet to make that slope dive into the edge of the creek, right?
Cale, I guess that's, that's my question that I was trying to get to. Maybe I wasn't clear enough with it. If you, because this is designed at a 24 foot top, correct? It's current. So if you're looking and you're bringing this into a narrow it up to, you know, 16 or whatnot, and you're bringing that in, do you not gain with your, that's why I'm asking with your cross sections with your LiDAR, do you not gain on that distance to the creek to where you're bringing in that slope if you're not having to meet a four to one, if you're meeting a two to one or a three to one? What is, what does your LiDAR data show on that?
So let's just say that we're going to make this super small and we're going to fill in the rest of Mickelson right away on this side. You'll notice the plan I got tried to keep the grading out of Mickelson right away, but let's just pretend like we're going to make our road exactly the same elevation as the Mickelson, fill this thing in so that people can truly just drive down the Mickelson. If you squared this thing off, but made it narrower, then you're talking about that elevation change. And that's what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Yeah, you're still talking eight, nine feet of three to one. You're still back to 27 feet. All I'm saying is, if you're going to try to do this on three to one slope, you're not going to make it. And that's saying that we are, we're following no rules. You know, you get going too fast, you better go put some boulders out here because it's a 90 degree corner. No curve. You're just sliding in it on 90.
So bottom line, we're trying to build the road to go across the Mickelson is the problem with the 100 feet. We cannot get the turn in. We'll be affecting the creek. Plus, there's rules and regs on the floodway, being that close to a creek. Trying to build the road at a whatever angle still, and you cannot change the floodway. You cannot change the creek in order to make this road be built. You can build a bridge across it or something, but then you wouldn't do that anyway because it's towards the, the hill. So I'm, that's why I asked the question. Is then that make it feasible to build this road anywhere else on this flat spot, Joe or Sean, besides what he's proposing? Because this is, this is a proposal, so this road has an access through Henderson's property. But Cale's saying that this is not an access. There's an access to a certain point till we get to the Mickelson 100 foot on the west side of the Mickelson, but not on the east.
I've missed the first part of that.
Bottom line, you can, you can build the access point to the west side of the Mickelson. But once you hit across the Mickelson on the east side, you, your slopes and basically your width to build a road, even if it's a small driveway, is not feasible. Because you either have to change the creek, but legally, you, legally, you cannot. And you have to be a certain, don't you have to be a certain feet away from the creek before you build in the first place? I didn't think you could even build, if I'm correct, Cale and Joe, that you could build a road 12 feet, 10 feet, five feet from a creek. You can build a creek, a, a bridge across the creek and do some culverts and stuff. But once you get across, that's pretty close to try to build a road that close to a creek.
I don't know that there's any thing prohibiting you to, to building a road next to the creek like that. I guess I, I would defer to, you know, I'm not an engineer. I've got the engineering degree, like Sean said. And looking at this out there and building the roads that we've built since I've been at Pennington County, you know, this looks like a buildable driveway. You know, I would, I would beg the question to, to prove otherwise, I guess, or prove that you can do it.
Just a question, Joe. So just seeing roads, we walked that, that Mickelson trail, right? That Mickelson trail wasn't down here. That Mickelson trail was up here. So I'm, if I'm doing 100 foot right away and my Mickelson trail is up here and my creek is that close by 12 feet off 100 foot right of way, common sense would tell you, unless I could talk the Forest Service into using some of their easement, that's a, that's a hell of a way to try to build a driveway.
Well, and, and as Sean pointed out here too, you got the edge of the right of way here, or the edge of the road here, right? So, Cale, what is it, two feet between your, your, your grading? Two feet between your, your, your grading here? Is that correct?
That's the, that's the correct.
So you got uh, two, four, six, eight, 10, 12 to the property line, I would say. So there's another 12 feet that this road can slide this direction, right? And you would only simply need the permission of Kim LLC to place a little bit of fill on his uh, property, right? Cause what we're looking at here is the, the grading limits. We're not actually looking at the actual road. So when we do that sort of thing, we need a temporary access easement um, to fill onto the Kim's property with his permission, you know? That costs the county a hundred dollars per acre or any other portion of. Um, so you could slide this road another 10 to 12 feet roughly looking at it um, to the south, which gains you up here, right? So then you suck that 24 foot into a 12 foot and you gain 12 more.
So tell Kale, sorry, Joe.
So that's, that's what we're looking at. That's what Sean and I are looking at when we're, when we're talking about shrinking this thing up and sliding it south.
So if you did it, and, and I'm listening to you, Joe, if you did slide it south Kale, um, what's that? What's that percentage of feet to the, to the creek? And how far, and I, I'll keep asking this, how far legally can you build a road? I don't care if it's a driveway or any kind of road next to a creek before um, well legally that you can build one. Cause you have to be, you already know, we can't build the road next. Maybe Brittany knows that. Brittany, you know, on a floodway, how close you can build a road? I know you could do parking lots in a flood, floodway.
Brittany Moeller, Planning Director. It would be dependent upon the floodplain development permit. So whatever it would be to not cause any change in the base flood elevation or to the floodplain.
Based on the slopes, do you think they could do it without changing, trying to go by close enough to that creek to be affecting it?
I, I don't know without, they would have to do some engineering.
Just from, just from watching before, that's a hell of a try not to affect the creek and still build the road there.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, I got Travis. Travis, Mr. Roster.
So I'm sitting here and then it dawned on me that something was said earlier. And, and maybe I'm going to speak a little out of turn since they haven't come up here yet for the second round. But I remember Mr. Rains, I think it was Mr. Rains or Mr. Romi, mentioned something about a detention pond on his property. That's why you couldn't put the access on that south portion where what we call our exhibit A, if I remember correctly is. Do I, do I understand that you can't do anything because of that? But you did say something that, why couldn't y'all sit down together and say, hey, look, if you've got to put another access a little further south? Maybe we can make this work for both of y'all. You're both working to put in a road access to, to that property. And get you the access that you need a little bit further south so that you can put your detention pond in and kind of work together on that. It just, it dawned on me that once, we've been kind of listening to this one particular piece. But if you're already going to have to move your access and try to move it somewhere else, maybe there's a possibility to say, look, we've got to build a road there anyway. Can we move it down a little bit further south, get you the access on there, put my detention pond and all that kind of stuff? I mean, I know that's, that's kind of shooting in the breeze right now because no one's really thought of that. And I don't know if y'all have even talked about it, but it seems to me that would at least be a viable conversation.
At this point, we're trying to finish up with, with them. We'll let you, let you guys, when you guys come up next.
Can I just answer that part real quick?
We, we can, we can hold that in abeyance if you'd like and answer.
Please do. I want to get through.
We'll, we'll come back to that. We'll answer that.
No offense Travis, I'm trying to, we keep, then we'll end up having Howie come up and, and then we get out of sequence. I just wanted to stay in sequence on.
Doing good.
Mr. Chair.
So Mr. Mr., you have any other questions for uh, Riggins and them?
Crosssavers.
The, the only, the only question, and I think Joe and Sean made a good point of it, is if you're going to deal only with this particular access here. This is the only way that y'all, if we're going to go across that road and we're worried about the slopes, what about a retaining wall? Cause I, I've been sitting here thinking about it, but I'm not an engineer. So I'm kind of like, nah, maybe that's not even an option. But the moment Joe or Sean would, whoever mentioned first, seems like it's appropriate that that could be. Cause I've seen some very small roads that can go up with a, a retaining wall on one side or the other. Just a thought process and I, I don't need anybody to comment on it, but.
Okay. Mr. Roskine.
I guess the point that I'd like to make is that I would feel more comfortable if you said, I went out and hired three contractors to give me bids. To see if this thing could be built. And then, and then show what the cost would be and show that it could or it couldn't. But right now it's just a lot of hearsay. Uh, I know that it's a, this isolated track, the, uh, it's supposed to, it's, it's part of a larger tract. And uh, I think that if a person really had to do it, I think it's, in my own opinion, I think it's doable. But I, you know, if I, if I had any contractors come in and said, nope, this is not doable. And it was signed and dated, that, that gave me some, uh, something to follow on. Right now it's just kind of hearsay, hearsay. That's what it appears. We're looking at a screen, trying to make a decision.
Thank you. With that, we've heard from staff and commissioners, I will move on. Is anybody object to moving on to Rains, Rio Gulch, given their presentation?
Just one comment.
Ms. Haco.
My husband's a contractor and he relies on the engineer. In order to build what he builds, he does not rely on his contractor to build that. He relies on the engineer that tells him how to build it. So I, I thank you for your comment. But um, my husband has been a builder for over 30 some years. And the engineer tells him how to build it. And then he builds it based on what the engineer comes up with for his information. So just food for thought, Ron.
Thank you, Deb. And so next we will go to Rains and I'll recognize. I'm getting my paperwork, so I'll get messed up. I forgot your name already. Cole.
Cole Romi appearing for Mr. Rains. Uh, shortly get to our expert. We do have an engineer. Um, so I just want to go over the statute again, give you a legal opinion or my legal analysis as Mr. Riggins did. Again, I will refer to 3122 dash one. First I want to say, and you, and you've heard, you've heard the statute, you've obviously been reading the statute. I want to point out that it does require that this parcel, this lot 11 be used or intended to be used in good faith, in whole or in part for residential purposes. I think uh, that good faith part is part of the definition of an isolated tract. Cause the statute goes on to say, an isolated tract is further defined, right? So using this in good faith or intending to use it in good faith for residential purposes. It's part of the determination, I believe, for an isolated tract. So what do we have here? I don't, I'm not aware of any built, pending building permits. There, there's some setback issues that our engineer is going to discuss. There's some floodplain issues that we've looked at. There's some plating issues. This isn't a real plat, I don't believe. I've not seen a real plat. Uh, it's just theoretical at this point. Um, maybe there's zoning issues for putting a residential property here. I would defer to uh, planning and zoning for that. And uh, so this is all kind of a theoretical discussion. We also maybe have an easement here. Um, that's, you know, i- i- there is some, there is an easement filed in registered deeds. I'll just say that. So it doesn't appear in good faith that there is going to be a residential property put out there yet. Next you have two definitions for an isolated tract. It can't, it has to be inaccessible by motor vehicles and it cannot be touched by a passable public highway. Uh, it's been mentioned that they're just kind of worried about one thing here, natural barriers. Um, and I will, I will ask Mr. Grapentine from Interstate Engineering to talk about that. And we're going to stay focused on that. What are the natural barriers? And he's going to walk you through his report. And uh, I'm just going to help here for, in case there's any questions on exhibits. But this time I'd like to turn it over to him.
Yeah, so Zach Rapentine, Interstate Engineering. Um, so I'll just first go over through, um, I guess this exhibit. I don't know necessarily what exhibit.
Exhibit three, page nine of uh, Crosssavers.
So kind of as Joe iterate, uh, was discussing, you know, shifting this road down, cutting the road essentially in half and potential of a retaining wall. Um, in my opinion, essentially means that this, this road is a viable option. At the same time messing with the creek, um, option, the first option A, the preferred option. There's also a potential of existing wetlands that are, that potentially would have to have some kind of analysis and some kind of awareness with um, the Corps of Engineers and figuring out how to do with that. So you still may have a culvert in that front. Um, and then also this, the, the middle option essentially, uh, you know, you still have, you have homes and other things that are structures that are within the grading limits of the property. So that's kind of essentially, I guess, I'm touching the points on those.
Okay. And if you could kind of just go through your full presentation and just start with um, start with your general opinion on this entire. Like your report does have this slightly different, differently drafted. Um, but your report does have it at 90 degrees, correct crossing?
Yeah, so the initial, um, when um, Mr. Ron Bangs laid it out, it was at a 60 degree skewed angle. Um, once we got the um, discussion with Game Fish and Parks about a 90, it was shifted to this, this vertical or this 90 degree angle. Um, again, and then I know the worries about, you know, coming off the, coming off the Mickelson trail. Um, there's, there can be a slope that dives down on either side of the Mickum, Mickelson trail to help ease, ease the health height elevations. I don't know, I guess how Long Branch put that together, how they analyzed that. Um, and also discussion's been made of the potential like two to one slope. Since it's not technically a public road, um, two to one slope could be utilized.
So in your opinion, can this road be built to public county specs and access lot 11?
Well, again, so I think like we discussed earlier, this is a hundred foot radius potentially. So without, I guess necessarily running it with a 40, 40 um, radius, it's kind of hard to tell at this junction. Um, again, I guess you could have a retaining wall. You can go for variances, you can put guard rail up. So I mean, there's, there's always ways to build things as we kind of talked about with constructing. There's always ways to construct something. It's just like, I guess, how much money and how much, how willing or desire you are to get to that point.
Can you talk to the elevations in here? I mean, are, are, how did they come up with this elevation data? Can you talk to its accuracy and?
Yeah, so light R data, that's, that's generally used, um, you're generally used for just public, you know? It's accessed by public entities. Um, a lot of times like I, like what we do and I don't, is we, we truth usually, we shoot, we shoot points on the ground to ensure that we tie in the light R that it actually fits. Um, and I don't know whether um, Long Branch did that. That's just something that we typically do Interstate Engineering in-house, just to ensure the accuracy of the light R. We don't just, I guess essentially just trust that it's almost right. So um.
I'm sorry, was there a question?
No, I said, I said last year, Travis.
So they're, they're calling this option C, right? And um, li- li- can you give any indication of how much fill is going to have to be, be put in there? Is it, is it unreasonable?
I mean, nothing's unreasonable. I mean, we've um, yeah, I mean, we've designed things that have tremendous cuts through the mountains, you know, that especially in Lawrence County, that's only 10% max. So when you're going through the hills, you're having to cut a lot of dirt and move a lot of dirt. So um, there again, there's really nothing that's honestly unfeasible. It's uh, yeah, I guess it's just knowing like how, yeah, how much you want to get there and how much it's going to cost. But yeah, it's not, it's not unheard of amount of dirt to move, to fill.
And so if, if they have to do something with the creek, by the way, are you aware of any rules that would prohibit them from building that close to that creek?
No, I'm, I'm not aware of that. I'm not saying that there isn't anything, but I, I don't, I'm not aware of anything like that.
So I mean, what can they do and how, how hard would it be to mitigate being that close to the creek?
Yeah, so it's kind of already mentioned, you know, with the retaining wall aspect of things, potentially shifting the road to, to gain that extra ground. Um, kind of looking, you know, laying out the design, um, tweaking it with the grades of coming into the trail and coming out of the trail. Um, there's various different things um, to do, you know, look at different kinds of slopes, you know? They was talking three to one, two to one, kind of four to one. There's different ways that you can tweak. I don't know if like the typical section through there was just the same three to one all the way through? Or if it was kind of tweaked to try to fit, best fit? Um, I, I'm, I'm, I don't know for sure, I guess how it was.
So is this the most fair and easiest representation that can be possibly drawn to, to reach lot 11 along this path? This option C?
Um, I, I think it's kind of hard to say that it's the most ult, ultimate optimal way. I mean, we're only talking about three locations that we've looked at that are feasible. Um, I guess the three that are presented, and like I said, Mr. Bangs had presented in our report, um, being this at the point it was at a 60 degree angle, but now it's at 90. But seems to me like, yeah, this is, this is the most optimal without affecting. Cause again, this is pretty much all on the other landowners' property versus being, you know, having to affect or encumber um, other landowners throughout the area.
So this drawing, and we're talking about page nine still, option C, it's on uh, exhibit three of Crosssavers. This drawing or this, this uh, diagram, it could be approved, improved upon though?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure. I mean, I, like you said, I don't know the level, what they did for design. So I can't really, I don't really want to speak to that it can be improved on. Um, because I don't, I don't know exactly how, you know, how it was done or what, how closely it was looked at. But I mean, there's definitely other options like we've all thrown out, you know, that could be looked into, you know, such as a retaining wall, such as shifting the road. You know, not having the 20 foot right of way or the 20 foot road surface or whatever was in there. And not having the, um, looking at the radius of a 40 foot. But again, that's for public. If it's a private road, you know, that can shift to however, you know, criteria.
And so let's just make this easy. Let's, let's just stay on Crosssavers exhibit three, if you're okay with that. Um, to make it easy, because this is what we've been using all night. So um, let's go to what they call their most optimal. Um, and I'll have, you'll have to forgive me, I don't know which, which page option A is.
Scroll down a little bit, cause I think that's the right.
I need to zoom out to. Well, so let's just talk about page five. And that's on Cross exhibit, Crosssavers exhibit three. This uh, shows the cut through um, really the west, or excuse me, the east part coming down over the cliff as they call it, down onto lot 11. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And do you believe that that's an accurate description of where the most optimal place to put that road is?
Again, I mean, there's multiple ravines as we gone out there and looked at, that there could be other, other areas to put that. You're talking about the road going up to the top of the hill.
Correct.
Um, yeah, there's other, there's potential other options again. The public and the private road thing is a big deal because I mean, if it's a private road, they can have switchbacks. You can have different um, criteria that helps it get up. It's not just, doesn't necessarily have to be a straight shot up the hill.
And let, maybe this would be better for everyone to see um, going, switching over to the Google street view um, on Chrome here. We're not, we're not suggesting, and if you're following with me, are you suggesting they go through here? Or does it appear that Crosssavers exhibit appears to be going in, on a, on a different area than, than this low spot to you?
Oh, I mean, I guess it looks like it's straight and you know, when we go out there, the ravines are pretty much, they're kind of angled more. They're not just a straight shot.
To the south?
To the, yeah, north or south, I guess I don't know.
Standing there facing it would be to your right. And that's to the south, right? But in Crosssavers exhibit, and let's switch back over to Crosssavers exhibit three. Does that appear more straight to you?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I'm saying. It's basically perpendicular to the hillside versus trying to optimize or utilize maybe the, the cuts over.
The lowest spot available. And does Ron Bangs' report speak to that at all?
Um, not necessarily. I think he primarily focused on the accesses along, along across the property, he's not so much up into that.
Very good. But in your opinion, you've been on the property. You think that that is a, another viable option here?
Yeah, looking at with your eyes. But again, you know, as engineers, we need to design and analyze and, and actually put together pen to paper, you know? Like we all can go out there and say, yeah, heck yeah, that's buildable. But um, that's why I guess I have a job is because I'm an engineer and I, I get privileged to get to design these kind of things. So um, without, yeah, eyeballing tests, sure. But you know, there has to be plans that are put together that show.
So let's talk about exhibit three of Crosssavers, their, their page. So let's talk about exhibit three of Cross Sabers, their, their page six. I forget what option they've called this.
I think it's two.
Option two, well, it's their second best option, yep. Um, what can you tell the commissioners about this option?
Yeah, I mean, I think, like, they, they touched on it a little bit, Long Branch touched on it. You know, basically, we're going to encumber it like someone else, or that, there's structures on the property. Again, I guess you can always, again, you know, cut your slopes tighter, um, adjust like the, the width of the road, you know, retaining walls.
Feel free to point to the commissioners.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, you could put retaining walls, you could adjust the width of the road. Yeah, again, they, they're going to be encumbering the north and the south properties with that aspect.
What kind of retaining wall? I mean, they've been out on the property, the commissioners have, but what, this is a pretty serious retaining wall, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it has to be designed, um, it would have to be designed for, um, vehicle loads. Um, it, it would have to be pretty priced substantial, because depending on the, you know, you'd have to have a design vehicle that you'd want to put it on, and have to be able to hold back that vehicle. So you wouldn't just have like a residential neighborhood retaining wall that would be up there, it would, you know, it'd have to be a pretty substantial design, at least like a pretty substantial footing.
And where's that retaining wall going to run, need to run on there?
Um, I guess, depending on the grade, you know, you know, the, I guess the easiest way would be is essentially you could run it along the road, but I mean, it looks like the contour lines kind of go along this way, so you you essentially just got to retain, tame the earth of the road and including the, the loads on top of the vehicle. I guess it doesn't necessarily, like, when again, the project is designed, that's where you figure out where the best placement is.
And so what is your ultimate opinion on this route?
Yeah, I mean, again, until further analysis can be done, um, like right now, it's hindering the structures, as was forementioned before. And again, it's encumbering of both two, two property owners that aren't the, um, applicant, I guess we would call them. Um, so ideally, you know, finding a different location would be preferred, but.
Is this an unreasonable or a reasonable route?
I mean, I wouldn't say it's unreasonable, um, because again, it can be built. But I guess compared to the other option, I would say this would, would be unreasonable compared to the other option, again, more.
And what's that other option that you're talking about?
Option three, so I don't know what exhibit it is, but the.
What they're calling option C, which was on page, uh, hold on just a second. Just want to make the record clear, page nine of exhibits.
Yeah, and I guess I just want to, you know, there could, there's just further things that can be looked at. Again, I think it was talked to, where it's kind of stipulation at this point, like, yeah, this looks like it'd be bad, but there's all these things that we, you know, not bad, but, you know, going across the creek, but there's been other options that's been thrown out that we need to analyze and look at that could make this a feasible, more feasible option that you don't have to encumber the creek.
Right. Okay, so let's look at what Cross Sabers has said is, is the best route for them. And you'll have to excuse me, because can't tell where everything is. Okay, so we're looking at Cross Sabers Exhibit Three, page eleven. This is the preferred route. What can you tell me about this route?
Again, so you have wetlands here. Yeah, and I guess, is there, is there a provided plan and profile of this? Would be my question, I guess.
What is that?
Um, so essentially like what we're seeing on the other ones that show, I guess, the existing ground and how the road center line is going to be going across it, because I guess I don't, I don't, it looks a little bit flatter, but as it gets to the, you know, the trail, the contour lines get closer together, so that means it's steeper. So I don't know what the cut fill in that area is either, so.
So what does that mean? I mean.
It means it could be the same, I mean, you have the same issue here as you do, or same raised, I guess, problems, quote unquote, that you'd have on almost every single other option.
So this route is just going to require fill, just like option C on page nine?
Potentially without getting the design, but then also, like I just mentioned, there's the wet, there's the wetlands that, um, Cor would probably have some kind of say over, so that would have to be considered.
So then, in your opinion, is this route a clear winner in this, in this, for routes?
No, I don't, I wouldn't say it's clear, no.
Is it better?
I wouldn't say it's better. Um, again, it's, it needs to be looked at more and needs to be more flushed out, but again, I, I think, again, option, or what, C, seems like the more feasible route.
And you say that because there's, there's really a lack of information too on, on this route, provided?
On this route, and yeah, yep.
Okay, so let's, let's also talk about the route that comes down from, um, the driveway. Uh, it runs along the Mickelson Trail. You'll have to excuse me as I try to find it. So it's on page seven, Cross Sabers Exhibit Three. Um, this route has been, um, uh, denounced as having too many natural barriers. So let's just walk through some of these natural barriers. What can you tell me about them?
Well, just the, again, the grading limits that's shown, um, shows it going well outside the area, which, um, obviously you want to minimize the amount of dirt move that you have to do. However, again, I don't know if it's like a three to one the whole way, or if there was manipulation on the catch to make that a two to one off of it, you know, potentially, looking at guardrail options. There's various different things that could be looked at.
To, and you're saying to look at, to minimize the amount of work that has to be done, the amount of cost?
Yeah, because I don't know, again, I don't know necessarily if they, if it was sticking to like the ordinance, so if this was like the, you know, like a public road design, or if it's, yeah, or if it has like a three to one or a two to one, or what's, what's the catch slope on this section?
Do you find that this route is unreasonable? It's just inaccessible by motor vehicle? It can't be built up?
I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable. Again, it's how much you want to pay.
Do you agree with the cost estimates that have been put forward here?
See, cost estimates are like, I don't know, what I'm always saying is, engineers don't bid work. We, we can put together estimates, and that's great, but in the end, the contractor is going to be the one that ultimately, and especially nowadays with unit price cost, then influxes up and down every single week that you put out a project to bid, just because everything's changing. So it's kind of hard to say like yay or nay on a cost estimate. Um, again, it depends on the contractor, it depends on like how hungry they are, if they're free, or if they're available. It's just an estimate that's provided by an engineer, it's not the actual cost of the project. You won't get that until you bid a project, so.
And have you seen any bids in this manner from Cross Sabers?
No, I, we haven't seen, there's no bids that's been, I guess, inputted into the, to the exhibits, I guess, those are, those are, I think, believed to be engineer estimates. You can have, you could have an engineer estimate a project, you could have four different engineers, you're going to get four different cost estimates, that's just how that world works when you estimate projects.
So is there something from your report that you need to tell the commissioners?
No, I mean, I think, I think a lot of it was actually pretty much covered, you know, with the, with that access, the, on option C. The viable option of going through their own property to get to the, the site. That's kind of the, what the biggest discussion of the report was about, is essentially getting to that point.
So as a certified engineer, would you adopt the comments of Joe Miller and what he's testified here to today?
Um, I guess, be, so, on what aspect?
So when he discussed how to maybe move the property south, and we're talking, or not the property, excuse me, the road.
Yeah, I mean, but again, you have to work with another landowner to get that option. Um, and I agree with like the site distance thing, that needs to be flushed out more. Um, and typically, you know, we, we do like, we actually go out, we'll survey the edge of road and survey the spots, and then we know exactly where it's at. And I don't, again, I don't know if this was surveyed or not, um, so.
And just for clarity on the record, this is page nine of Cross Sabers Exhibit Three that we were discussing. What other things can they do to mitigate the intrusion onto the flood, hydraulic flood plane?
Yeah, I think it's kind of been talked about, you know, move the road, put the retaining wall. All that stuff can be looked at.
Okay, well, if you have no further comments, I guess, we have no further comments for this witness.
That's it, Cole?
Thank you.
Or you got, you got more?
One moment, please. I would like to have Mr. Rains come up one more time and talk about the isolated tracks. Um, this is his property, cares very much about it.
Yep.
And so I would, I would just ask you to.
What was that?
Darren Rains, owner of Real Gold Cell Storage. Uh, I've been building a long time myself, and I've always found when you challenge engineers, especially young engineers, they have an incredible way to come up with ways of doing things, that's what they go to do, they engineer a way, ways of making it happen. And it's, it's oftentimes quite incredible, especially if you say, well, what about this, what about that? And a real builder, you get kind of used to maybe tickling them the right way to think about things that maybe they haven't. I don't see anything here that's not doable in multiple planes. Interestingly enough, it's a culvert or a bridge, or box culvert, concrete culvert, or something that that creek is going under. You could place the same thing over to the side, you could do a retainer wall, you could put a stop sign and make immediate right turn, you could tighten up the corner. If I was, had an engineer, I would start challenging him on this, say, well, what about this? And he will, I might go, oh, well, yeah, yeah, let's think of that, let me run that by Bob or, or whatever. There's nothing here that I have even seen that even looks like it's seriously challenged. Coming along the parallel from their mother's land above, they're using an existing bridge. How are they accessing the back property now that's not, clearly not an isolated track? It must be over that existing bridge. If they're going to build a development backup there, like they say, wouldn't they have to replace that bridge anyway? The USDA, they didn't say, they whittle grain it, they, you know, basically, if you read all down the letter, it says they demonstrate need, they've got the seventy foot path through there. You can push that earth over this way, put a culvert next to it, there, across the creek, and bring a straight road this way. There's no reason in the world why you can't. Other than speculation. You can cut out of that hill, you got, put the road in form, just to rent the dozer. So there, there's option here, options that, that aren't being looked at. And no, we don't want to give up our land any more than Howie does at the bar. We paid for this lane ourselves, we bought it the way it is. They are creating complications for us, let's scroll up a little. Creating complications for us, we don't know that we'll be able to put a road down here, we don't know that we want to, we don't know that it would benefit us.
And just for the record, he's looking at the, the pack, the full packet, the four hundred page commissioner packet, page one forty-seven.
And to avoid looking at another drawing, this lane goes down here, pointer around a curve, a corner, and some elevation changes to it, into wetlands, we don't know what we could do down here, whether it would benefit our overall plan. Uh, and we want to keep a secured facility. And we honestly just don't want to give somebody our land. I don't think the Hendersons, if somebody came and said, you know, can I have some of your land to build a road through it, we'd just do it without saying, wait a minute, why are you asking this, what kind of need is there, can you do it yourself? And quite honestly, I don't see how in the world this even qualifies to be considered to begin with, because it's not under five to ten acres. If they expand this to a five or ten acre tract, it's going to be up on the top part of it, which then it clearly won't be an isolated tract. It doesn't qualify down here, it has to be minimum to be considered five to ten acres. That's, that's the South Dakota codified law.
Well, strike that, uh, so, South Dakota codified law does have five acres, it's true, and, and we understand that this is, this is over a five acre, lot eleven is over five acres, uh, but the usable area is what you're referencing.
Yeah, the usable area that they haven't even carved out yet to say it's a separate isolated track. If it's part of the larger tract, then it's clearly not isolated land. They're not saying that, they're saying this little area down here in the bottom, which is under the law, which the law allows to be considered an isolated track. So I don't understand, to begin with, how they can call this an isolated track, it doesn't meet the legal definition of an isolated track. It just doesn't. So if they make it bigger, and probably the reason they have it is because then part of that quote isolated track becomes definitely unisolated, because it's up on top of this hill, part of, behind them, which clearly isn't isolated. So, I think I've covered most of this here, but the, these are the things that I just have a harder time understanding, I don't see a real demonstrated need to drag us through all this, to be quite honest. And that's all I have, unless you have a question of me.
Thank you. Are, are you guys, are you done?
I thi- I don't think we have any more witnesses.
Wait, can you wait till the next wit, after the next witness?
Didn't Travis have a question for Mr. Rains, too?
Well, they're, they're not finished, that's why I asked him to wait.
His aren't done?
No, we have time for rebuttal.
Once they've finished, then we ask questions with their presentation, then we'll, that's okay, yep.
And, and we're finished?
I thought you had one more.
Nope, we, we're finished.
Oh, okay, so now we'll open it up for.
Yeah, unless we need to address something.
Now, if you're finished, I'll go to, well, staff first for any, to questions or address Rains' presentation.
So I just have some, some specific questions for Zach Grapentine? Grapentine, um, let's see here. So here, I don't know, this is obviously showing the distance, this is, uh.
I'm going to interrupt, here is page one sixty-nine of the packet.
Yeah, thank you, Megan. Um, so, obviously, we've discussed the, the portion on Hendersons between Mickelson and three eighty-five, and how that's going to have to come down, the, the three eighty-five, uh, right away there until, until such time it can cut across and come back over here to the, the property line between Cam LLC and Hendersons, is that correct? We've, we've kind of established that that can be done.
Yeah.
Okay, so then the, the question is, you know, uh, we asked Kale here a little bit ago, was if we move, uh, the, the, the road all the way to the property line as you show here, um, make it a twelve foot, and I, I would ask the Cam LLC, uh, Howie here, um, would you allow such that, uh, if drainage was addressed, fill to be placed on your property? So I don't know if everybody heard that, but he said yes. Um, so that drainage is addressed here, uh, be able to fill onto his property, so that means you can slide that, if we go back to, um, oh, I don't know where it was at, I think it's this one, so if we were to slide this road all the way to the property line, uh, using Kale's design here, um, that fill would then be placed on Cam's property, would you agree that that could be done?
Yep.
So then, we narrow that up another twelve feet from the twenty-four foot road top that it is, and we're going to gain a total of twenty-four feet, is that correct?
Yep.
So if we, these are two foot elevations, Kale?
Each one's a foot.
Each one's a foot, so we have, um, to the, you know, from the edge of this road, we have one, two, three, four, five feet of elevation change from the edge of the road here, going to just, let's see here, getting ahead of myself. So we narrow that up, you said there was twelve foot of elevation change from the top of the Mickelson Trail to the creek elevation, is that correct? So, it would be a pretty small retaining wall, uh, would you agree, Zach, to, to get that slid all the way down and a twelve foot road top built with a, with a corner and be able to fit all of that in, um, with the hundred and six feet that you guys show here from, whoa. Oh, boy, what'd I do? From, I'm assuming this is your LiDAR data, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's the same, it should be the same LiDAR data that Long Branch uses as well, I mean, it's the same public.
But would you agree that what we stated earlier, that you can fit a twelve foot road, or a twelve foot driveway access easement, whatever you would like to call it, um, on, fully on Hendersons' property, crossing the Mickelson at a ninety degree without having to get into the, the creek?
Yeah, I mean, the eyeball test, like, again, does show that, but it, it just need to be designed, then it need to be looked at. Actually surveyed, land surveyed, um, and not using necessarily just the LiDAR data, and need to be placed properly.
But you would agree that it is a total But you would agree that it is a totally feasible and buildable?
Definitely something to look, yeah, to look more into, for sure.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, what I want to clarify is, um, we're talking about whether the parcel of property is isolated.
You need to get to the mic.
We're talking about whether the parcel of property is isolated or not. And so what I would ask Joe to clarify is, he was asking, can with a 12-foot road, can you work it so that it stays entirely on the Henderson property and bend around and, and get to lot 11? You had mentioned, Joe, earlier that, um, uh, Cam, would you be good granting this or that? That's not relevant to this discussion right now. I just have to caution you of that. That's not relevant to this discussion. You either can build the road without needing further easements, in which case, uh, maybe the property's not isolated. Or if you need additional easements, well, that kind of answers the question. It must be isolated. So I, I guess I'd ask you to clarify that so that the record is clean as to can you build this road without further easement or trespassing or whatever?
So I guess to, to clarify that, to use Kale's cross-section and, and slopes, you'd have to place fill onto Cam's property, um, in which case you would need an easement, correct? You could do that without needing an easement, using a retaining wall, right? You could not place fill onto, to Cam's property using a retaining wall. Is that, I mean, is that the cheapest option? No, but it's an option. Um, you know, I think the retaining walls on Sheridan Lake Road, if, if I remember correctly, no, I mean, this isn't 100% accurate, but I think they're $100,000 and they weren't, I mean, they were eight to 10 feet tall. And there was a lot of fill placed behind them. So they're, they're, they're a viable option. Would you agree?
Yeah, no, I agree.
Is there any further questions of Joe?
Chairman.
Ms. Hadcock.
Here's my opinion. Kale ran some of this stuff and he ran it and ran it. And Zach, you're giving your opinion, but you have not ran the numbers. And you said, I could flush it out. I could look at it more. It's my opinion. Well, I appreciate that, but I also, um, we clarified it. I understood the bridge thing with Kale and, and the DOT said that. But we're, we're determining if this is an isolated track and you could build a road on that. And you're guaranteeing that you can and you will by standards be able to build that on that property, go across the Mickelson Trail and by your engineering standards, a road can be built there without getting an easement or anything else, like Jay said. You're giving your opinion, but it seems like when somebody has to do a calculation on one side with their engineer and the others just get a give of an opinion that it could, could happen. To me, I think that that's disingenuous of the work that should have been done if that's the truth. Me saying that my opinion that we could build a road there is different than I have calculated facts and information. Another thing is, Mr. Rainey, you got stuck with this and I apologize.
Well, he, he does have a professional report with Ron Bigg, Dan, and Chris Allen here. He's just, Ron went to work for another county, so he's standing in for him with Interstate Engineering.
And, and I.
He does have all of the work that engineer.
Right. So, so you guys ran those numbers that Kale did and, and proved that Kale's, that you could build a road there. And I didn't hear that tonight. I just heard an opinion that it could.
Missed it, or Ms. Hadcock, may I, if up in front of you here is, uh, their work, and that's kind of what Sean and myself used to determine that, yes, this is a viable option. Ron Bangs is a professional engineer that did work for, uh, Interstate Engineering. Yes, this one isn't at a 90, but there's a document, I think, further up that you guys did look at the, uh.
So Joe, the only thing I want to ask you, based on your en- engineering and Zach, that you can build, and Jay is right, you can build a road on this and legally through the planning and everything else, it's a viable option. That's all you guys are saying. Without them getting easements or anything else in order to do this.
Yeah, based on that figure that Joe just showed, that showed, and again, it's at a 60-degree angle, but yeah.
Okay. And based on, um, what you said on the retaining walls and everything for the other property, Mr. Rainey, uh, Mr. Dittwiler knew that at that time, building on his, because of the drainage, you will also have to build retaining walls because of the drainage or do some fill and stuff on yours as well in order to make that, that property, if I recall, Brittany and Jason, to make that viable so that drainage doesn't have issues in the wetland or affect the creek. So. Here's, I'm going to blame this partly on myself. When we vacate a section line, Joe has told us many times, don't vacate it, try to relocate it. At the time, I viably thought from a promise, so did Mr. Howard, so it wasn't made up, that there was going to be easement. Well, Romney just said that he thought, and based on, uh, his opinion, whether it's viable or not, there was a private register of deeds easement that was filed. Okay, so that wasn't made up. You can't make that up and you, and you can't say so in promise and you can't have somebody else tell you you did. So unfortunately, Mr. Rainey, my opinion was we probably shouldn't have relocated it, or we should have relocated it right where it was at the time, because we're taking public right away at 66 feet and maybe taking some of Mr. Dittwiler's. Mr. Romney, you said unreasonable cost. To give somebody 20 feet of your land and to work with Mr. Henderson and Mr. Howard would have been reasonable. To me, just saying. It wouldn't be in such a nonsensical thing that I've seen since I've been on here. In good faith residential purpose. This has been the most controversial thing I've seen. And again, if it was the intent, which I thought was, to give an easement through that property, because why said the 66-foot right of way? Why I agreed was because, and I did say it, because we found a solution, because we could probably do that easement, which Mr. Dittwiler, which Mr. Howard knew that we were going to do, because it seemed like the most viable option at the time. Now we're in this with Mr. Rainey and all of this nonsense because we can tell Henderson, well, go on the other side. Now you got another place. I sold the property. I didn't say anything. I didn't make promises. Mr. Howard's wrong. Hadcock's wrong. Um, he's got a viable place. Go over there. That doesn't sit well with me. Because you can't make that up. You can't file something. You can't have a, another witness and you can't have people telling you that they took that 66-foot right of way, gave it to you, public right of way, that was a public, and you were going to give something back to the public so they can have it access. You can't make that up. Right? So bottom line is, um, we're going to tell Mr. Henderson, we're going to tell his engineer, um, that, uh, you guys have access. Good luck in the future. Have fun. I learned a lesson here. I won't take a promise. I won't tell people and I won't believe people until I, I relocate and I have this board on my side relocating a section line so somebody doesn't get isolated in the past. That's my opinion, um, tonight. I don't know if I'm going your way just from all the nonsense that was played tonight, um, on something that had viable effect on what is going on with this whole opinionated, um, track. So, thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Uh, we're at the point, uh, that we have questions for the, uh, for Cole or your, your property owner. Does any commissioners have questions that they'd like to ask?
Mr. Chair.
Before we move on to, we still have a hallway to go through and then we also have the rebuttal time before, then I'll open that back up for discussion for the commissioner if they have comments to make, uh, moving forward. Mr.?
Uh, Zach, I've got a question for you. You made a statement that you could hire four engineers and get four different answers.
Yeah.
And earlier I asked if, we had some actual cost estimates from area contractors because you also made a statement that engineers, their cost estimates can vary. Uh, if you, if you call a contractor, they're going to say, I'm hungry. I can do this. You know, I need the work. So that's why I asked if we had a contractor go out there and say, this is what we want. Can it be done and how much? That's what I was looking for tonight.
Okay. Any further questions for the Rains or Mr. Cole? See none? Thank you, folks. Howie, it's your turn. You have anything you want to follow up on? I believe you, he has about an hour if you'd like it.
I would tell some Norwegian jokes. Uh, Howard, uh, you know, with, uh, Cam, I, I really have nothing else. I think we pretty much went through what I know and what I've got. But if anybody had any questions based on anything else that's come up for me?
Any questions from the commissioners for Howie? You prefer Howie or Howard?
Uh, Howie is my, I suppose, most common, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Howard, for coming up.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, y'all, have a good day. Have a great night.
Thank you. Next, we have Cross Sabers for their rebuttal. You have 15 minutes for your rebuttal.
I think I have a little more than that, but whoa.
I'm trying my best not to use it.
24 minutes.
24 minutes.
Thank you. Uh, what I want to do is I want to talk with you guys a little bit about what we have here that's been presented in evidence. I appreciate what Commissioner Hadcock said. We've got one set of engineered plans that have clearly spent hours and hours and hours of time analyzing and determining what is workable and what isn't, whether that's from a cross-section cut to come down a mountainside, whether that's to try to cut into an area to try to wedge a roadway in between U.S. Forest Service property. We have hours and hours of time in engineering that has been presented. We have several comments from a non-engineer and a non-attorney about what legally we're doing here today and why all of these other roadways that he's proposed are A-OK because when you look at them, they look fine. So I want to be very clear, it's important to focus on the engineering. We also had, as Commissioner Hadcock put it, a whole bunch of this doesn't work, but I haven't really looked at this and I haven't really developed anything. Well, the time to develop an alternative roadway was a long time ago. We're here to finish this case, not to talk about what you could or couldn't do based upon some work that we didn't do coming into this. One of the important things I want to point out as well, on the document that's up on the screen right now, this is the engineering that Mr. Bangs did. Again, both the engineer here today who looked at it and staff acknowledged that that isn't even the same crossing that we're talking about in Exhibit C. They have not re-engineered these plans. That involves a 60-degree crossing on the Mickelson Trail, which Game Fish and Parks said they won't allow. So what you don't have is any engineer who's actually taken the time on their side to look at Exhibit C or Plan C. They didn't do it. Instead, they're over here throwing rocks at an engineer who spent hours and hours trying to put this together. So I want to be very clear what you have in front of you, and that's exactly what it is. I also want to be very clear that what we're dealing with is an isolated tract under SDCL 3122-1. First of all, Mr. Romney called into question whether there's a good faith basis to believe that my clients would develop this property for residential purposes. You've heard that they've talked about doing that. You've not heard one single piece of evidence that that's not the case. Not one. Not from one of their witnesses. The only reference you've heard to that not meeting the good faith requirement is testimony from their attorney, which if we appeal this decision, has zero weight because he didn't do anything other than say he didn't know if it was good faith. He didn't present any witnesses. So I want to be very clear that there's been no witness testimony to refute that there's a good faith belief that that's property would be potentially developed for residential purposes. There's been no testimony that it's less than five acres. 7.92 acres is in the petition. There's been not a single witness who's come in and said that this property is less than five acres. It meets the requirement for an isolated tract so long as there's not access across the Cross Sabers property. We've also heard testimony, as Mr. Alderman mentioned, that you may or may not be able to cross this property on Plan C if you put filled dirt or used part of the neighbor's property. Well, if you use part of the neighbor's property, it meets the definition of an isolated tract. That's exactly what Mr. Alderman advised you. And so, again, I want to be very clear. The Plan, Plan C has never been developed by their engineer here today. They're working off of a prior plan from Mr. Bangs that involves a 60-degree crossing. And that involves potentially utilizing part of Mr. Enu's property in order to make that work, because if you don't use part of Mr. Enu's property, you're in the creek, as our engineer testified. So that's what we have for evidence. I want to be very clear that that's what you guys have heard, because it's all part of this record. And I want to make sure that you guys all understand what we've heard today in six hours of time, it feels like. Uh, and I will let Mr. McNabo spend a couple of moments to address some of these grenades that were lobbed at his work without taking the time to actually come up with an alternative.
Yeah, thank you. So it's Kale McNabo, Long Branch, of Engineering. Yeah, I would like to respond to a couple of the things that were mentioned. In particular, you know, I think there was an assertion that, you know, that maybe we should have checked the LiDAR. I think I stated twice for the record, the LiDAR hit within two tenths. Um, so I guess I thought saying it twice was enough times, but apparently it wasn't. Anyway, um, if we get back to my crossing. Option C. What I tried to do, and this is the, the property line that we, we have with the neighbors, I tried to keep the fill off of the neighbor's property. It didn't impact him. And I came up with a center line that got us over the Mickelson Trail and turned the corner, got us to cross at a 90. But if you look at the effort I put into this, the fill slope also keeps it off of the Mickelson Trail right of way. So not only was I trying to keep it off of Mr. Howie's property, I was trying to keep from filling the Mickelson Trail and making this corner. And I think that's the stated purpose of it. If you look at the projection of Mr. Howie's property line, and there's this idea of just, well, we'll just slam this road right down on this, this point where it's the Mickelson. But look at the projection of his property line out to the middle of the Mickelson Trail. I'm already within a couple of feet of it. But yet can we move it south? Four feet? Five feet? Oh, yeah, maybe. Just going to push the fill slope on Mr. Howie. Um, and doesn't have a giant effect over here? No, because I pushed this radius out so that we don't fill in this area. If you want to come into a complete 90 at this point, you just realize we're going to fill in this part of the Mickelson and everybody's just going to cut the corner. And all of a sudden, that just became a 60-degree crossing again. Now, I'm not going to participate in that. That's just not, that's just not good effort. Um, so I guess I get back to the fact that I spent a lot of time looking at it. And I know there's this conversation, oh, my gosh, you know, we could do this, we could do that. You know, have you thought about building a wall over here or Gavion Basket over here? You know, this site has got problems. It's a bad crossing spot. But if I go to, sorry. Let me get out of here. There we go. We're going the right way now. This Option C is a bad site. You know, I felt like, um, when, when our opposition got up and presented that case, I thought they did a pretty reasonable job of, of explaining how Option B was also, was going to require retaining walls and how that was non-preferable because it was going to require retaining walls. Oddly enough, it doesn't work for Option B, but Option C is a great place to use retaining walls, I, I guess. Um, so, and then the, the other discussion that was had was, well, we could cross and we could follow some ravines and we can do some switchbacks and if you want to go 100-foot vertical and you're set. in your set at seventeen percent, which I think that we discussed, we don't want to do a driveway board in seventeen percent. It's going to take you five hundred and eighty-eight feet to get there. And I don't care whether that five hundred and eighty-eight feet is straight or whether it's switchbacks. If you follow the center line, it's still five hundred and eighty-eight feet because it's still seventeen percent. Unless they've got a version of math that, I'm just not aware of. That's, that's just it. That's the length of the road. At that percentage, to go up that elevation. So, I think what we've got ultimately, and I guess I, I hope that I was trying to say it correctly, but if we come off the cliff face, what we've got is a huge cut. And yeah, the cost of that cut is up in the air. What I did was, I had a job I recently opened in Hill City that involved RockX. I use that number. Is it plus or minus? Probably. Is it the best available data I had? It's from three months ago. I think it's probably a pretty reasonable number for RockX. This option, you know, it doesn't, it, obviously, we said that, I have the cross-sectional data, and I, I felt like I talked about this two hours ago. There's a five-foot difference between this relatively flat gravel surface, which comes across here, to the top of the Mickelson. We need five foot of fill. If we had a three-to-one slope, that'd be fifteen on this side, fifteen on this side, on a twenty-foot surface, that's thirty, it's like fifty foot of easement. Sixty-six if we had, if you had four-to-one slopes. You know what you don't need? Retaining walls. We just do it right on the fill slope. Just fill it in with dirt. Yeah, there are some wetlands. It's going to have to go through the core, try to get onto the nationwide permit, but I think you can bury, what, point three, seven acres under the nationwide permit. This would get onto that. This access would get up over the Mickelson. And I guess there's all this conversation about, "Well, my gosh, there's a wetland here." But that's where the detention cell is that they're proposing. Obviously, there's some thought that's already been given to how to work around the detention cell. Um, so, I still think this is the best location. It's half-built. It doesn't, it's not going to require a wall. It's built out of dirt. You know which one does require a wall? Well, Option B requires walls, a bunch of them. I think we all agree. That's not a good option. Hey, the other one that requires a lot of walls? Option C, plus participation from our neighbors. Yeah. So, all of these options are requiring walls. Option A doesn't require any walls. I guess that's what I'd like to leave you with.
Thank you, Kale. Quentin, did you have anything? Finish out?
No, I, I think Kale pretty well covered it. The main point I wanted to make is the determination that we're here to request that you make is that this is considered an isolated tract, and that it cannot be accessed only by using the Cross Sabers property to get to this piece. And I believe that based upon what you guys have in front of you, that can't happen without encroaching upon neighboring properties, which would make this an isolated tract. And we would need to determine what the best route of access is from that point.
That's it, Quentin? All right, thank you. With that, Jay, do you have any comments before we go to the commission?
Was there any further discussion from staff or anybody?
No.
Mr. Chair.
I'll go to, I'll go to the commission. Mr. Laster.
Kale, I have a question for you. So there was a lot of discussion about the other side not giving, you know, other options or engineering options and whatnot and, and things. Now, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe I missed it. I'm looking at Option A, B, and C here, and Option B and C have some pretty detailed contour lines. You kind of walked us through that. But Option A, I don't understand how Option A is a viable option for you if you didn't put all of the contour lines in there like you did with Option B and Option C. In other words, I see just a blue kind of highlighting, and to me, it doesn't look like that one's been vetted out with the same contours like B and C, unless I'm missing it. I'm just, I'm just, I was sitting here going through everything to see if I missed something. But I didn't say, I didn't see Option A as detailed out as you did with Option B or C with all the contours to show everything. So I'm just kind of want to understand what makes you think that's viable without showing us all the same situations that you did with B and C.
Sure, yeah, thanks. Again, it's Kale with Long Branch Civil Engineering. We are on Exhibit Three. Cross Sabers Exhibit Three.
Yeah.
Um, final page, or we've outlined in blue. Yeah, I didn't go through and run an actual road profile through this one. I could have done it off the LiDAR. I guess I didn't feel like I really needed it. I know that the top of the Mickelson is higher than, is five feet higher than that point. So, we're only gaining five feet. Five feet over that, you know, two, three hundred feet is no problem, grade-wise. And that's why I was trying to allude to the fact that if I needed five feet of fill right here, right in that location, at a three-to-one slope, I'd need a fifteen-foot embankment on this side. It would go flat across the road for the twenty feet, and I need fifteen foot on the other side. And that's why I was alluding to the fact that we're talking about fifteen plus fifteen to get to thirty plus the road width, you know? And that's at a three-to-one slope. So, this, this grading will absolutely work. It just seems very simplistic since we know the Mickelson's five foot higher than that.
Mr. Chair. I'm not an engineer, so bear with me on this. I, I do understand that, but I, but I also see that there's possibilities already from the current landowners' owned property that could come across. If we, if we don't develop out different options to show the commission, then we don't have all the information to make a decision on Option A. At least I don't. I mean, I, I can't say that I would say that I would agree with Option A because I don't see how, how the develop, how it's developed out or how it's going to impact, just like I'm seeing the other two. I don't necessarily think Option B is, is the preferred option from my perspective. I think there's a lot of problems in there, and it does impact two different landowners, other than the landowner trying to get access. I do believe from being out there, looking on site, you know, I, I have a half a mile driveway to my property that's gravel road, and it has lift and raise and all that kind of good stuff. Have to go over railroad track. And so I know that you can put a smaller road in and things of that nature. I, I just don't know if I can call it an isolated tract without going through some, you know, heavy engineering to say, "Yes, we absolutely cannot make it viable to get access to it." I do remember when we were talking about this, and I don't remember if it was when we were down in that hotel room, we were talking about it. And, and I know Quentin talked about it today. He could build a road anywhere. The question is, is it practical based on, you know, the costs and all that kind of stuff? I do understand that, and I don't believe you should come off the hill and come down to get access either. So don't, don't assume that that's my, my thought process. But I do have a problem saying that, well, if we're going to evaluate these, if they're not all free with the full amount of, you know, slope and all that kind of stuff, I don't know if I can consider that a viable option. Just my opinion.
Do any other commissioners have questions of Quentin and Kale? Mr. Ross?
Kale, I got a, Kale? Can we go to Option C?
Yeah. Cross Sabers Exhibit C.
So, what you did is you, you put a profile up there that showed that that would be rather difficult to do. But if you're asked to do that with the use of guardrails, retaining walls, and a stop sign, it could probably be done. It's just going to be more expensive than the other options. If I understand, so if we, without getting on K E M M property, retaining wall there, move everything south, put a retaining wall between the road and the creek, guardrail, when you go around the ninety, possibly a stop sign. I mean, if you had to do it, it could probably be done. It's just more expensive and time-consuming.
Yeah, I believe, well, I can't imagine anything that couldn't be done. I mean, there's, yeah, if you want to put enough money on it, you can do anything.
That's my question.
Yep.
It's just that now we're talking cost.
Yeah.
But we don't know the cost because we've never hired somebody to say, "What would it cost?"
Yeah, if you want to talk about, "Can it be done?" We could
That was my, that was my question.
We could tunnel more from this parking lot and get there.
Any further questions for?
Can Mr. Riggins or Kale, how did you determine the seven point nine-two acres? Because we keep arguing it's five acres, it's not five acres, it's seven point nine-two. Because it is, Mr. Riggins or Mr. Kale, it is in a big parcel. So how did you get to five acres or seven point nine-two? Did you plant it off? Did you, I mean, how was that determination made that it's an isolated tract and it meets that requirement of acreage?
The seven-plus acre determination was made by Kale by following the cliff line out to the Mickelson Trail right away. And so, he did the work to determine the exact size of that particular parcel to make sure that it met the qualifications under the statute.
Because that, just that piece, not the whole thing, was isolated. That's the part that was isolated was the seven point nine-two.
Correct. The only piece that's isolated is that piece that's below the cliff line, between the cliff line and the Mickelson Trail right away.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions?
Here's, so, I'm listening to Jay. And I'm seeing the viable option that the first option didn't seem quite that Kale brought. Kale ripped that apart by saying floodway, can't make the turn. We'd have to do, deal with the Forest Service. The Forest Service said we like to keep it at ninety degree. Basically, I took from that option that that wasn't going to work. So then the option that came out of C was to, we'd have to use some fill. We have to do it further down. Well, we heard from Jay, who I believe said, "It's not, it's isolated then." It's not a viable option if you have to go and do that. Because you, that means the landowner is isolated. The minute you have to go use somebody else's land, just like you would Option A or B, not isolated. Or, I'm sorry, it is isolated. Because you cannot, and it makes sense. You, you'd be doing the same retaining wall, the same fill, the same thing as Option A and B then, to make it viable to get across Mickelson Trail to go there. So Option C is out. So A and B is your options. Because Option C, because you have to use fill to go across the Mickelson Trail. And if you read the statute, Mr. Riggins, you read the statute, it has to be a viable option to that statute. So, what's, at this point, A and B, or we come back and find another solution, which I don't think is going to happen, or we go to court over it, on Item C, just because you can pour ten million, you could build anything, we said that today, but that's not under the isolated track viability. Because they have to spend ten million instead of do this Option A and B because it's isolated, because we'd have to fill it to do the other options. We're right back where we were. So, um, to me, Option C is not viable, in my mind, because of cost, because of the fill, because you'd have to fill, you have to do everything else on Option C, and Kale said, and it's true, it's too far and too close to the creek to do it that way. So Joe, Zach, said move it down, and it's viable if you fill it. Otherwise, it didn't sound to me, and by Kale's calculations, that you could do the other. So, we don't have any other options from the other group. We had Option A, we had Option B and Option C. Option C is what you guys were betting on, and I'm, I'm not in agreement with that based on listening to Jay and the options we had. It's not isolated. I mean, it's isolated now because you have to use somebody else's land to do it. You understand what I mean by that? Because once you start using somebody else's land, you can do that on Option A and B too. Option A and B, you could do fill, you can do some retaining walls, you can do some stuff just like you can on Option C, which means it's isolated, and it means it's isolated. If Mr. Henderson can't get to his land without using somebody else's fill or property to do that, it's isolated. Am I correct, Jay?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, do we have any more further questions for Quentin? And this is the time for commissioners to ask questions of Quentin and their group. Mr. Laster.
I would just like to ask a clarification. So you're saying because they have to use fill on this land, but if they can keep it off of the other people's land with retaining walls? I just want to make sure I was understanding what you're saying, because if they use retaining walls on their own land and make the access go over there, I'm confused how it's using somebody else's land. Because that's what Joe had suggested, is using retaining walls on their own land to hold back. So that would not be then having to access someone else's, which I would agree, if you had to access someone else's land, then yes, it could be considered isolated. But they have a direct point straight across their land to get across that. They just might have to do it differently with a wall. So that's what I want to make sure I'm understanding.
You're coming off, and Kale's telling you, as an engineer doing the work, that you came off the wall and that you don't. You can put a retaining wall there, but you have twelve feet in between that in order to do that. You tell me if you can build off the Mickelson Trail with a retaining wall, get over a creek, how much room? Tell me, Kale. Travis wants to know. Without doing fill or anything across the Mickelson Trail and twelve feet of land, what can you do in that land if you've come up? Because we're saying, if we, we can do anything, can we build a retaining wall coming off the Mickelson Trail, not affect, and not go into the floodway, and build a road to that, to the isolated track? That's what Travis is saying that we can do based on what he heard today. And I don't mean that being Travis, I'm just saying, I, I want to know for myself as well.
Uh, thank you. It's Kale McNaboe, Long Branch Civil Engineering. We are on Cross Sabers Exhibit C.
C.
Sorry, I keep flipping to the wrong spot, but... So, if, if we're doing what we're talking about, and we want to build a wall down here along this edge, yeah, you're going to have a wall that's going to be five, six, seven, probably eight, nine feet tall along the edge of the creek to try to keep from coming into the creek on this edge. If you wanted to slide the road south so that you could pinch it down against, you know, the, yeah, oh, gosh, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. If you want to slide it south to the direction of this line, I think you could have a wall that would be, well, you want, it'd be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
So, you can't go down in the fill, and you can't use the other person's land to fill it. So we couldn't go by the, by the, the boundary of the green line on Exhibit, what is this Exhibit what again?
C.
C. So you came off with a wall coming off there, so you can't fill, you can't do anything. You have to stay up further because you said if you, and that's what I heard, if you build right on that line, you're going to have to do fill, and you're going to have to do some stuff, and you're going to affect the other guy's land.
Yep.
So that wasn't an option. So if you pull it, and you fill, and you do stuff where the light gray is, can you come out viably right there based on the rules and regs, being in the floodway and being in the Hunter Deer Flood? Can you build a road, because that's what we need to know today? Can we build a road, no matter what the cost, to get to that isolated track? And what would it take, and it wouldn't affect the creek, and it wouldn't affect anything else in that area, because we could build it viably?
You'd end up building a retaining wall that came through essentially this area? And I suppose, yeah, it would be somewhere, oh, legitimately, I guess, if it's twelve foot of fill. Yeah, you're probably talking, let's just say, a ten-foot wall.
So it's viable.
You build a ten-foot wall, you'd probably put a guardrail on it, and you'd come into a really hard left turn. And you'd have to shrink that road down. But, like I say, I mean, everything is possible.
So you answered my question. So, our determination as a commission is you can get access off this road. It would cost you more because you have to buy, build a ten-foot high. It would cost you more because you have to bu, build a ten-foot-high wall, but it's possible to get this isolated track unisolated by that ten-foot roll, uh, wall. And that's what the commission is, is asking you as well in general. So, it's not isolated. It's not isolated if you can build a ten-foot wa, wall off there is what I'm saying, Kale. Because it's viable, it's just gonna cost you more money. And unfortunately, um, it has to be, is it viable at ten-foot? I guess maybe the judge has to figure out what that cost needs to be, if that's the problem. But then it's not isolated. My issue was, I didn't think you could build a ten-foot wall or you could build anything that close to the creek that would be viable to isolate that other track based on the room and not filling and using somebody else's land.
I don't believe you can build a structure in the hydraulic floodway. Now, I think that you can build a structure in the floodplain if it's a foot above base flood elevation.
So, what I'm asking you is, can they build that ten-foot wall there and make it so there's an access to this land, Kale?
Well, and I think that the interstate alluded to it. I mean, if you went out there and built a bunch of walls, you could probably fit some sort of a twelve-foot path through here on top of the walls.
Okay, so you answered my question. You can build something on there. It's just gonna cost you money. It has to be reasonable. But at this point, um, you don't know what that cost is for, I mean, retaining walls are expensive. I'll tell you, it's gonna cost you some millions to build retaining walls at ten feet. But, um, I checked on my land, um, so it's not isolated.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any more questions for Kale, for, uh, Quentin and Kale? With that, we'll, we'll close their rebuttal time. And I'll ask, um, staff, do they have any comments?
Good evening, Brittany Muller, Planning Director. I just had one comment. It's on page eleven, um, just to be aware of, um, that I noticed during the discussion. So, if this was utilized as an alternate route, it would be a public right-of-way. So, you'd have to be cognizant that these structures would have to be in a twenty-five-foot setback to that public right-of-way. So, I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay.
Chairman, can I ask Brittany one question? Brittany, so if they built next to the floodway, could they build a retaining wall next to the floodway coming off the Mickelson Trail? And how far would that have to be to make it viable?
It would have to be determined by a flood study. Um, typically, it would have to be determined by flood study to say with, you know, just on the fly. I, I couldn't answer that. Because sometimes when you do the study, the, like Kale had indicated, they actually have the floodway shown where the wetlands are instead of the actual channel. Um, so, the floodplain in that area would have to be studied to know exactly where it is to even know to answer that question.
But he was twelve feet off the creek coming off that corner. Um, that doesn't make a very big road coming off a corner with twelve feet to build a retaining wall with a road, in my opinion. Um, I'm not an engineer, but it doesn't make sense to me that you're gonna come ninety degrees, you're gonna be twelve feet off the creek, you're gonna build a road that's gonna be how wide? Three feet? So, you, you're gonna be a retaining wall. How wide's the retaining wall? This big? Two feet? Three feet? Usually three feet, I'm gonna guess for that bigger wall. You're gonna come off there at three feet. You're gonna build the road how wide? Does that make sense? Because it's not gonna retain on one side, it has to retain on both.
I don't think.
Guess what, what I'm tracking is, how do you build, how do you build a road between twelve feet? Come around a corner? I mean, you can expand it and stay far enough off a creek at twelve feet. I mean, I don't have to be an engineer to figure that out. Because the floodway, there's a creek. I know some of it was wrong, but I'm saying there's a creek right there when it comes off. Um, I don't know how you're gonna do that and make it viable in a big enough road with common sense to be unisolated.
Commissioner, I think this is time for questions. I'm gonna give everybody an opportunity to make their con, final comments before I ask for a motion also. But, um, is there any more questions or comments from staff? Seeing none, uh, I'd go to the Board of Commissioners. Do you have any final comments to make before I request a motion for the floor?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drew.
My comment would be is that I think that, question that's for us is to determine whether this is an isolated tract or not. I don't believe that it is isolated. Uh, I think they've shown that, you know, through effort adjusting the option C that was shown to us, that it can be accomplished. I don't think that we have responsibility of determining whether it's financially feasible or not. Uh, so, you know, I, I'm not in favor of, uh, of, uh, voting in favor of a isolated tract.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
I'm in the same boat. I don't believe that it's isolated. If that piece of the Henderson property for option C, if all of that was, uh, Howie's property or something like that, so that the only way they could get across her is if they had to go across somebody else's property, not across their own, um, then I would agree that it would be considered isolated. But I do believe since their land abuts that, even though it may take some finagling, I don't believe that it should be considered as an isolated piece of land.
Thank you, Mr. Laster. Mr. Roskinak, do you have any?
No, I think my last question, uh, to the engineer kind of told me where I need to go on this.
Ms. Hagcock, do you have any final comments?
My final comment is that I'm not convinced, um, that it's not isolated. So, I cannot vote that it's isolated at this point or basically, um, in favor of the, the applicant on the other side reigns because I'm not guaranteed in my mind that it's not isolated based on what I've heard today and knowing floodway and being on floodway committees and different things that, um, you can just go build a road across the Mickelson and it's a viable way to make an unisolated track for Henderson, so.
Thank you.
Think it's isolated at this point.
Thanks, Deb. My final comment would be to both, all the parties involved tonight, thank you for, uh, being here today. It's been a long night. And this commission takes this type of work seriously. And I hope you understand that with two site visits and all the experts that were brought forward and, and the coalition of meeting with our attorneys and meeting with you guys privately, I think this commission is giving you due diligence of a hearing and determination of, of the isolated track and, and all the stuff moving forward. I myself, I do believe it's not isolated too. So, I just wanted to make that comment. But I do want to say, I do believe this commission is giving you a fair hearing. With that, I would go to the commission and ask for a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd make a motion to deny the application to establish a right-of-way to an isolated tract for Cross Sabers LLP because proposed lot eleven is accessible from the south portion of Cross Sabers LLP property.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second from Roskinak. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that I understood. You said from the south portion of their property? I just want to make sure that's lined up right.
Excuse me, yeah, north, the north.
Yeah, that's what I was, it was at the north side. But is it the south?
Oh, north.
The south piece of that western portion. I, I guess I just want to make sure this word is.
Instead of saying option C, I chose to say south side because option C has to be, I think, obviously reworked in order to make it.
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody's clear? Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, I will go to a vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no. That concludes our hearings today. I do have items from public, and I do not have any speaker request forms. So, with that, I would move for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moving Hagcock, seconded by Roskinak to adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.